I'm using very.
Okay, we are live.
Okay, is L M C T V there? It is. We're live streaming. Good. We're all ready to go. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the rescheduled September 2nd meeting. So this is the September 23rd zoning board of appeals of the village of Mamaroneck. Before we begin our public hearings, I wanted to give you a couple of updates or changes on the agenda. Case five eight twenty twenty one, which is here twice, but they're not. It isn't there twice. A four thirteen Soundview, as well as five eighteen Florence Street, which both have the same number, case number on the agenda, but are not the same application, as well as three eight twenty twenty one, seven thirty to the Parkway and twenty one S P twenty nineteen six ninety Mamaroneck Avenue. All of those were discussed at the last meeting and were voted on, so they will not be. There will be no discussion of those applications today. They have already been voted on. Also, with respect to five oh four, the Parkway, it says that the board will consider reopening the public hearing, but that was done at the July twenty second public hearing and the board determined not to reopen the public hearing, so that will not be discussed tonight. Instead, we will have a discuss a draft resolution. Okay, the news has gotten better. The rain is hopefully not going to be as bad as it was predicted today, and we won't have another flood. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is case number four, a twenty twenty one ten forty feet Boston Post Road. It's an application for a variance. Is the applicant here?
And would the applicant? Yes, raise your hand. Thank you. I see. I'm going to promote you to panelist.
What did you say?
Can you hear us, Greta?
Do we have a?
I'm here.
You're not. You're not on video, you know, just.
Yeah, I had to step out.
No, that's okay. Just wanted to make sure you didn't think you were.
You can't keep warm by keeping your name on there.
And I see some other raised hands, but I'm not sure if they are.
Yeah, Andrew, that you have. You have. The applicant is, I assume, is here. Is he the one who's got?
We have all members. If we could have them elevated. I'm sorry. I don't. We have a new village planner. I'm sorry. My name's Andrew Spad. I don't know.
Hi, my name's Madeline Homer.
If I could just, congratulations, by the way. Welcome to the village of Mamaroneck. If I could just ask that several individuals be elevated, that would be Kristen Wilson. Uh, we have Dennis, Joe, Brian, and Nick. Any other first names I will?
Joseph Dushy, is that?
Sorry.
Joseph Dushy is this? Is that Joe?
I don't know what name. I don't know what what email he's using.
Let's see if I promoted everybody who is.
Right. Okay, so if you're on the CHOP team, raise your hand and you'll be promoted.
Correct. It should be Joe Duchesne or Tushy. Do you have him there?
Maybe.
He's here.
Yeah, he is. Okay, great.
Chair, if I could just ask, Rob, what is? This was kept open. We've heard this many times. Um, what was? Was there something specific this was kept open for? As I don't recall.
Hello, sorry. It's Duchesne.
It's a good question, Dave. And there was something specific we kept it open for. And maybe Andrew can remind us of what that was. The applicant. There was something specific, Dave.
Yeah.
Good evening, Chair, members of the zoning board. Andrew Spad, on behalf of the applicant, and before I even begin tonight, thank you for actually rescheduling this meeting. I know back on September 2nd, we were in very challenging times. Our village was absolutely had catastrophic damage and destruction. And the fact that we're here this evening means that we are ready to rebuild and go forward as a community. So Chair, members of zoning board, our new village planner, thank you, because this means a lot, and it's so important for our community to get back under my track. Chair, to answer your question, there was a few little minor points on the site plan that the board had asked for. Specifically, I think there were three labels that needed to be added to the plans for clarification in terms of parking. I know that our team did exactly that and timely submitted it through Amber, and hopefully you were in receipt of that back before, well in advance of the September, September 2nd meeting.
Yes, I remember. We considered whether to close it and just leave this, leave it open to get those submitted, and then we thought we'd leave it open in case any of the board members had questions.
That's that site plan or that that survey?
Yeah.
Were received in September, correct?
It was the site plan. Yeah, whatever that was. Yeah.
And this evening, if I could, basically, we're here seeking permission to operate a restaurant with car service pursuant to Article Six, Section three forty two, three A one E, Article ten, Section three forty two, six seven, and Section three forty two, three B twelve, and three forty two, three B eighty five of the Village Code.
Excuse me. Excuse me a second, Andrew. I'm sorry, but because we always have our meetings tend to last a while. Please, we've all heard the application. We know what you're here for. Limited to, you know, informing us what was what's changed or?
Nothing's changed. Absolutely nothing's changed other than other than what we discussed at the previous meeting.
Can you go through that?
On the site plan. You have that. It's a car, restaurant, car service, two variances. One for the parking within four feet of the side yard and the other one for a space located fifty feet off the front line. Simple as that.
And can you just show us? Can someone from your team show us on the site plan exactly what the changes or the changes that were made in response to the request?
We certainly can, Ralph, or if you could. Great. Wonderful.
Chair, my screen right now, and the, we actually highlighted the areas in red.
Yep.
That was specifically requested to show the parking and the dimensions at this for the two car service spaces to highlight the parking space in the front and the sign that was going to be used here.
Okay.
Great. Does anybody on the board have? Let me, before I go, does anybody else from the applicant app, from the applicant team want to say anything about this application before we go to questions from the board members?
You also, were there also? Oh, I see. Card. Yeah, you know, on the two, the two different plans you have have markings. Okay, yeah.
I'm only showing you the one plan I didn't, because this is the most comprehensive one.
It has all the, it has all of the
Right.
pieces.
Do you want me to stop sharing?
No, no, that's fine. I just wondered if anyone, anybody else on the team had anything to add? If not, board members, does anyone have questions? Please?
Generally, the variance, regularly, the variances run with the land. Maybe this is for council, but what happens if in the future they don't want to use? Let's assuming that it was approved. They had the car service and they don't want to use it. Where does those spaces revert to?
I think if they didn't want to use them as car service, since we're approving it, and it's going to be conditioned on these development in accordance with the site plan, and the site plan shows this is how it's been developed with X number of car service, they would have to come back to amend the variance.
Or could they? Or could we put in that if, or would they be accepting of the idea that if car service was not utilized, those spaces would be used for the, for customers in the public, you know?
For parking. We could do that. We could just say anything.
Yes.
Using car service. We could absolutely put that as a condition.
And Chair, we're very fortunate that we have a surplus of parking, so thankfully, those three spots, it's not, the application itself on its face is not dependent upon maintaining those. So it would be at the discretion of the zoning board. If you would like us to make, keep them as regular spots, that's fine. If you want them removed, that can also be achieved without compromising the number of spots that we have.
Well, I think that keeping them as, since we, since there's been some concern raised about parking spaces, it might make the most sense to turn them into parking spaces.
We certainly defer to the board. We have no problem.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question, and it's not about the site plan, so you don't need to keep sharing if it's maybe a little easier for us to look at each other without sharing the site plan. Um, we had an excellent presentation of your plans for using your software and the algorithms and the ordering, and I, that we questioned quite a bit. What percentage did you think was going to be picked up at the window? How much takeout and how much eat in? And I went back and reviewed the video, actually, and I do see that we were told that you assumed it was about a third. It's hard to know, because I know this is a new model for you, but you're assuming about a third will be eating in. So after getting that information, I went back and looked at the code closely, and I would like to ask, I know it was, it was in the original um, application, which is now we're into another, another application, actually, but in that first one, Mr. Spass, I think you went through all the definitions of, you know, where this fits. You know, it's not fast food, and now you're saying that it's a restaurant. But I would like to ask, when I look at the definition for restaurant comma carryout, a carryout restaurant, in defined terms, three forty two dash three, why this is not a carryout restaurant? Because that definition certainly seems to describe exactly what your model is here. And I'm sorry if other CHOP members who are here, you don't get a chance to look at our zoning code. I could read parts of it. It's based a business enterprise primarily engaged in the retail sale of food or beverages for consumption off the premises, but which also includes the incidental sale of ready to consume food and beverages from a counter type installation for consumption on the premises, provided that the area devoted to customer seating is clearly accessory to the main business and complants with the area requirements. So as I see it, incidental sales, the smallest portion of the sales are the eat in portion, and that the primary purpose is the ready to consume food that will be taken to be consumed off site. So then when I go to the definition of restaurant, it seems to entertain already and be prepared for the fact that a food establishment might have more than one type of food establishment working in it. It says the term restaurant does not include a business whose principal operation is as a bar, cabaret, carryout restaurant, delicatessen or fast food restaurant. So it, it seems to understand that we don't have to make it either or. It could be proportional. You could have some portion of your restaurant, of your food establishment operating as to how we define restaurant, meaning you're bringing the food after it's been ordered. A wait person is bringing it to the table. But we're very clear last time we met, that that, that would be a third of your business, and that two thirds of your business would be the carryout restaurant. So if you have some response, otherwise, to me, I think this carryout restaurant exactly fits the description of your business, and restaurant does not.
Chair, again, I'm going to defer to the definition as provided by the Village Code, which states a business is engaged in the preparation and sale of food and beverages selected by patrons seated at a table or counter served by a waiter or waitress and consumed on the premises. Um,
And the next sentence.
Just if I may, and the application that was submitted went into great length and detail explaining why CHOP was a restaurant. And as in why we felt it does indeed fit the criteria of Village Code. Um, and I can read it verbatim if you would like. It's, it's.
You stopped in your definition of a restaurant. You didn't read the full definition.
The term restaurant does not include businesses principal operation is a bar. We're not a bar. We're not a cabaret. We're not, we're not carryout. We're not necessarily the carryout restaurant.
Okay. So let's go back and ask, why are you not considered a carryout restaurant when you look at the definition of carryout restaurant? Tell me what part of that, how, how, what you've described to me as your business model doesn't fit in what that definition?
I actually can answer. I don't think that it fits within the carryout definition. A business enterprise primarily engaged in the retail sale of food or beverages, which may include grocery items. They don't include grocery items for consumption off the premises, so we have a certain amount of that, but which was also includes the incidental sale of ready to consume food. This is not ready to consume food. Ready to consume food does not include something that's being prepared, just like all food at a restaurant, when it's served, is ready to consume. Ready to consume food for a carryout restaurant is presumably not something that is brought to your table by a waitress. And it says, ready to consume food from a counter type installation. They're talking about restaurant service. Therefore, it is not a counter type installation. Therefore, it does not fit within the definition of carryout. Moreover, provided that the area devoted to customer seating is clearly accessory, if you look at the footprint of the restaurant, more of the space is devoted to customer seating than to any other use, so I don't think it fits within the definition of restaurant carryout. Now, do I say that I know what it is? No, but am I saying that I don't think it's a carry? I think very clearly it doesn't fit within the definition of restaurant carryout.
If I could respond to that. And if I could, I could just respond right now. I'm very sorry. And then I'm sure you want to speak. Let me just respond right now. A third of the business will be eat in. So rather or not, you say the footprint, it doesn't talk about the footprint. The primary purpose is to take the food off site. I do believe you're, you are not selling any food that is not ready to be consumed. All of the food orders will be ready to be consumed, food. So is selling, you're not selling something that you have to put together later at home or that you couldn't eat. It's ready to be consumed, orders. So let me just finish. So I just disagree, Robin, with what you just said. It, everything, yes, all restaurants have ready to consume food. I agree. Also, it's about the primary operation. They told us that a third would be eating in. So I know there's a great deal number of tables. That's wonderful. Um, but that isn't, it's not the primary purpose. As many tables as they have, they believe two thirds of the orders will be taken out to be consumed. And also, it just simply needs to offer a counter type installation. It does offer, you can go to the counter and order your food. So it offers a counter type installation. It may also offer restaurant, just as in the, in the definition of restaurant, where it says, a restaurant, you could have a component that is a restaurant, just like you could have a component that's a bar or a cabaret. But it wasn't the important part is what is the primary use? And as the primary uses, two thirds of the orders are to be taken and eaten off the premises, then that is a carryout restaurant.
Actually, I don't think that's right. I don't think that's right at all, because actually, the definition of carryout does not say you can have other, you can hit, can also include a restaurant use. It specifically says, this is the only thing of a carryout restaurant is, you are correct about the point that the principal purpose is carryout. Ready to consume food, all restaurants provide ready to consume food, so it does clearly doesn't apply either to this or to anything else. It doesn't distinguish one type of restaurant from another. Every restaurant, the food that you're given, except, you know, HelloFresh, when it delivers to you, is not ready to consume.
But if you look at the definition.
Let me finish, Meg. All food that is given is ready to consume. So then we look at the other pieces of this. So what can it do? It also includes the incidental sale of ready to consume food and beverages from a counter type installation. That's the only thing you can have. Doesn't say it can have a restaurant operation here. That is not in the definition of carryout. And just because the definition of restaurant allows you to have carryout as part of it, doesn't mean that a carryout allows you to have restaurant. It is definitely not in the definition. And then it talks about, it doesn't talk about that the principal purpose is this. It says, the area devoted to customer seating. Okay, is clearly accessory. Finish. Let me finish. The area devoted to customer seating is principally the entire restaurant or most of the physical space in the restaurant, except for making where they make the salads. Now, they don't know what this is going to be. They are estimating one third. It could be, it could be ten percent. It could be eighty percent. The bottom line is, we don't know. Now, we can. So, so I don't know.
If I could just.
Okay, this sounds more like deliberations. I mean, I think if the applicant wants to finish, and then these are topics that you can talk about, I would think.
That's fine. I wanted to.
I mean, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just suggesting that, because I mean,
Right.
You're raising good point.
I wanted to raise this and make sure that the, the applicant understood what I was asking about and how, where my head is going. So if you would like, we should ask the applicant if they would like to respond.
I would, and I'm going to allow Dennis to speak in a moment, but before, if there's any question or doubt with regards to restaurant, what we are, I plead and I beg, before you vote, on page two of the narrative that was submitted to the zoning board of appeals, it goes into exactly what Meg just asked about why CHOP is not a care, I'm sorry, why it's not a quote, carryout restaurant. And specifically, one of the provisions is that our dining room is a core part of our business, not as per the Village Code, provided that area devoted to customer seating is clearly accessory to the main businesses. We come, plan on having nine hundred square feet of front house dining space inside the restaurant, and are also constructing a seasonal outdoor patio for additional dine in service. Um, if you recall, we did a one eighty from when we first started December twenty twenty. And it says of, they are now changing the model from the other sixty three outlet, other establishments they have to be a restaurant, so that we would fit within the definition of the Village Code. Now, it's my understanding that when it was referred to the zoning board of appeals, the building department found that it was going to be a restaurant. That was the way it was defined as such. On, and I would certainly, again, implore you to review that if there's any questions in terms of whether or not we're a restaurant or not. Dennis, if you, I know you were trying to say something.
Sure. No, I mean, we largely agree with Chairwoman Kramer and our attorney, Andrew. We really have nothing further to add on that point. I know that Nick Marsh, our CEO, joined late. It's the village planner. If you're able to elevate him. But we really have no further comment on that. We agree with every comment made.
And before you do close, if you so, if you so choose, obviously, we're going to ask that the public hearing component be closed this evening. I know that Joseph would also like to be heard as the landlord for the property.
Hi, everybody. My name is Joseph Duchesne. My company is Janelle Real Estate. Uh, you know, thank you for having me on the call. I know I wasn't on, you know, some of the other calls. I'm the lead owner of the building. Um, my family, we own about, you know, ninety five properties across the country. Uh, you know, our main uh, goal is to buy property to improve property. Um, we've heavily invested in, in the community of Mamaroneck. We, we purchased another property on Boston Post Road, just to give you a sense, where we, we actually put City M D was the tenant that we installed at the property. There was, there was a proposed Orange Theory Fitness that was supposed to go into that property that was, you know, that had trouble getting approval uh, with, with Z B A for whatever the reason was. And we purchased the building, you know, thank God, we, we had the opportunity to put City M D in because it, it was a, you know, very, very good tenant to have in the community during COVID nineteen. Um, you know, furthermore, we, we purchased this property, um, and our, our intent, our goal was to find a, a use uh, that was going to benefit the community, uh, that was going to really, you know, change the landscape of the, of the block, cater to the high school across the street. You know, we're investing, you know, probably over a million dollars in tenant improvement costs between the landlord and the tenant uh, that's going, going to go into this property, add tax dollars to the, to the city. Um, and I think it's really critical that a vote happens tonight, because in the lease, we have a clear termination right. And unfortunately, obviously, we've been, I know, I know it through this, through this process now over nine months, and we're at the same, obviously, the same place we've been nine months ago, where we don't have an approval yet. Uh, but the, the deal is really on, on edge, and it's, it's, it's not going to happen unless uh, we get an approval tonight. And the problem is, the problem is that, you know, we have, we have to start building out the space. The money can't just sit doing nothing. We really want, want to spend money building out the space and get, getting it, uh, you know, improved. Um, so we, we're really just asking tonight if you could, if you can work with us and, you know, try to make this happen. We're willing to kind of do whatever it takes to get an approval uh, so we could start the work. Um, and, and just to say something even further, you know, the tenants been through, through, through a lot the last nine months. The landlord's been through a lot the last nine months. We're both here together trying to make it work. So if we have to change something, if there's a, a little bit of tweaking here, tweaking there, whatever we have to do, if there's one extra parking space, two extra parking spaces, we just ask that, you know, whatever's decided on, you know, gets decided on tonight before this deal goes sideways. Um, you know, the, the, the other two or three tenants. Oh, sorry, David. Go ahead.
No, no, please.
Oh, I thought, I thought you wanted.
I'm just trying to share. Just telling them I want to ask a question. That's all.
You know, what, listen, we respect everybody's decision. Uh, you know, we're open for any, like, questions, accommodations. We really want to be here. We really want to build this for the community. We think it's a really a healthy alternative. You know, the, the other users that came to me before this, just so you get a sense, they were Wendy's, Taco Bell. I mean, it was worse than the McDonald's that on the same street. We don't want that. We want a high class, beautiful restaurant at the property with dining. You know, we want to cater to all of you on the call. You know, we, we want it to be a good, a good part of the community. So with that said, that's really all I had, I wanted to add, being that, you know, I'm putting up a lot of money to, to make this happen. And, you know, obviously, Nick and his team are also investing a lot of money to make it happen. We, we just really want to get started, and we don't want the deal to go sideways. So just, just, that's all I had to say. Turn it back to anybody else.
Did someone say they had a question?
Anybody has a question for me, obviously, I'm.
I just have a very quick question. I just want to make sure I didn't misunderstand you. I thought what you said was if it's not approved tonight, then you have a right to terminate, and it will go sideways, and you will terminate. Is that what you, I just want to be clear on that.
I'm, I'm saying, the deal, the, to answer your question a little bit more.
I just need an ass. No, no, but I understand you have the right. All I want to know is, I just want to know if what you said is what I heard, and that is, what I heard is what you said, and that is, are you saying that if it's not approved tonight, you're inclined to cancel it?
Uh, so I'm going to, I'm going to reiterate what I said. Nick Marsh has the right. So they, I am the landlord, right? And I leased the property to CHOP. CHOP has the right. If they don't get an approval within a certain period of time, they could cancel the lease.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Uh, I'm on the call because they've been through, I think, five or six meetings. They've gone through multiple people, I guess, on the board that has changed over throughout the process. Uh, I think one of, there was a, there was a person on the board that's not on the board. I don't know all the fine details, but, you know, they, they've been through a lot. They really want to be at the property. Uh, but yeah, they could cancel. In the meantime, I'm paying all the carry costs on the property, real estate taxes, insurance, you know, it's not your business, but.
No, I understand.
I want the landscaping. I want the landscaping to be green. I want it to be healthy. I want the property to look beautiful. I want the roof to not be leaking. I want it to be a property when you drive, when you all drive down Boston Post Road, you're proud of the property. I don't, I'm not an investor that wants to come into Mamaroneck to build an average product. That's not what I do. That's not my, that's not my business. I, I, I invest in A plus properties, and I invested in CHOP because they're an A plus tenant. And with that said, they do have a right to cancel the lease. If they cancel the lease, again, the, the tenants that I, I was talking to, aside for CHOP, with Taco Bell, with Wendy's, there hasn't been a lot of tenant interest in general, you know, due to the pandemic. So I just, you know, with all of the facts, I, I just want everybody on the board to know, you know, what, what we're up against, and I, I really do feel that this is a great use for the property. One that you don't find every day. You don't find a, of quality restaurant operator like CHOP to come into your building to spend millions of dollars to improve the site. That, that's, that's just, you know, just for clarity, I hope that. And that, that's, that's just more, you know, just for clarity, I hope that, I hope that helps, David.
Yeah, no, thank you. It explained the point.
And I, and I truly, one more thing, I truly mean everything I say. So everything about improvement is, is what I do in life. I was taught by my uncle. You know, he's retired, semi-retired on the golf course. So he relies on me. If he looks at a building and I, and he doesn't see it in mint condition, I'm in very big trouble. And so I, I, I really live up to the standards. I live up to an A plus standard. I'm a perfectionist in what I do. And I picked Nick and Dennis because they're absolute perfectionists. I, I think their build out is, is a stellar build out. It's, it's really second to none. And um, I think you're going to all experience it when you, when you, when you allow us to build that. I really do. I think you're going to love it. I think you're going to absolutely love it. And the quality of the food is also amazing. So.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Does anyone else on the applicant want to answer, have anything to say about Meg's particular question? Or the other issue about restaurant, type of restaurant? Um, Meg, do you have more questions?
That was it.
Anyone else on the board have any questions?
A motion?
Well, let's just make sure, Greta.
Public, I'm sorry.
I, I didn't hear what you said, Greta.
I said, no, I'm ready to close.
Okay, so someone want to move to close?
The public, is there anyone from the public wants to speak? Did we have anybody in the public?
It's a good, thank you. It's.
I don't see any hands.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion to close?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, Meg.
Yes.
Greta.
Yep.
David.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So the public hearing is closed on this. Uh, we may discuss it tonight. We, it is conceivable we would vote. I don't know that we will, but the hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. Um, Ms. Helmer, I have one other matter, I believe, as item number two, so I can hang in here or I, you can let me come back in, however you.
You are here for three oh eight Amerenek Avenue?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, you could stay. Andrew, you can stay. You don't have to leave and then come back. I have to wait till I call it, but then, okay.
We're going to drop off.
So everyone needs to, will to drop off. Okay. The next item on the agenda is case number eleven SP twenty twenty, three oh eight Amerenek Avenue, which is an application for a, a special permit and it's an amendment of the special permit. Is the applicant here? Or I guess Andrew, you're the applicant, you said.
I am counsel for the applicant. If I could ask Ms. Helmer to please elevate Michael, uh, Mike Arici, R I, A, A, A R I C I.
Um, let's see. I don't see him present. Um, if, oh, okay, here we are.
Uh, Mike, if you could raise your hand. Macbook. Is that him?
I think this is him.
Mike, uh, could you go off, uh, could you take your mute off, Mike? There you go. Fantastic. Okay, wonderful. All right. Good evening. Again, Andrew Spats, six fifty Hall Street Avenue, Suite one oh five, Amerenek, York one oh five four three. On behalf of the applicant, uh, at three oh eight Amerenek Avenue. Um, just two things. One, uh, this matter, we, we are resolved with the matter that was previously pending in Village uh, court. I just want to state for the record that the judge presiding was Judge Gallagher. I have no objection to this matter being held further with the participation of Ms. Heaney at all. I feel that this can be held in a fair manner on, and I am confident that there's been no dialogue exchanged with regards to the, what transpired on either in court or bench conferences ever held at the bench. Uh, so I'm comfortable with this matter going forward on with Ms. Heaney.
I, I would just confirm that I've had no conversations with my husband about this matter. And in fact, the first time I heard that he was involved in the matters when you mentioned it.
Yes, and I appreciate that. I just, we, we made this disclosure in court and I, so I'm just trying to make full circle so everyone is on same page. So thank you. So, uh, if I may, uh, we are requesting new hours of operation from eleven AM to twelve AM. That would be midnight Monday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday, eleven AM to two AM and Sunday, eleven AM through ten PM. On later hours would not be unique to this property as Cafe Mozart once operated as a restaurant cafe for many years at this location. Uh, and the special permit granted back on November fifth, twenty twenty unfortunately restricts the applicant from operating its business as intended, which is similar in nature to that other form of business that was their Cafe Mozart. There are two major circumstances that I think we need to talk about this evening and I'm going to ask, there's two points. Let me finish my point. And then I certainly welcome comments or anything from the zoning board of appeals. Because what I'm going to share, I believe, is going to set a different standard here in the Village of Amerenek, especially as it relates to restaurants. Um, and it's something that I think we've taken for granted and something that we have not really explored and had a dialogue about. So just bear with me and at least for point one. The courts have held that municipalities are not permitted to use their zoning powers to regulate the internal operations or details of a business. In fact, unless there's substantial evidence or a nexus established showing how the hours of an entity would negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood as part of the special use permit. New York State courts have struck down conditions imposed by zoning boards that restrict the hours of operation of a business as an attempt to regulate its internal operations. This is, as you know, the central business district with limited residential use in the immediate proximity of the property, this specific property. At this time, we're not aware of one single complaint by neighbors related to the hours of operation. Simply put, there is no evidence or nexus that the intended hours would adversely affect neighborhood. In the matter of Westbury Trombo Inc. versus border trustees in the Village of Westbury, the court concluded that the generalized concerns, which were uncorroborated by empirical data are not probative and any such potential uh, detriment. In fact, in the matter of Slaughter and McCallis, the court invalidated hours of operation set forth by ZBA as it concluded, quote, "The board of appeals has no power to impose conditions which apply to the details of the operation of a business and not the zoning use of the premises." The incident application is a permissible use in the C two business district. As pointed out in the matter of Old Country Burgers versus Town Board of Town of Oyster Bay, quote, "The power of a zoning board to impose conditions and granting a special permit is not unlimited. The conditions so established must relate directly to the proposed use of the real property and not the manner of operation of the particular enterprise conducted on the premises." It's important to note that with the exception of showing that there is an, an adverse impact on the neighborhood, the only manner to impose hours of operation would be through a legislative act. That means that our village border trustees, when they establish the various zones in the village, could certainly establish a cap of hours. However, it pleases, it did not do so. Therefore, the ZBA would be restricted to discretion set forth by the courts in regulating the internal operation of a business. Let's talk about the hours of operation. The village code provides absolutely no definition for the hours of operation. Unlike hours of construction, parking, et cetera. Our code is absolutely, does not state the required or minimum hours of operation in this zone. This means that an individual may certainly enter an establishment and place in order before the hours of operation concludes. But this does not mean that the app, that the establishment has to be cleared out or empty at that point. Moreover, it can be inferred that at the conclusion of operation, no additional tables could be seated and the kitchen may no longer prepare orders. But there's absolutely nothing in the code which states that occupants must vacate the premises at the conclusion of operation as this is common practice in the dining industry. And this is something that should obviously be taken up by the border trustees, obviously not today because we're dealing with other situations, but in the future. What is clear is how they expanded hours were for the applicant, the opportunity to run a successful business, especially in light of the return of our new norm. It should be noted that this particular property is not located directly in proximity to residential units, specifically the Regatta or the Sweetwater. It is somewhat insulated by other commercial, retail and culinary, culinary driven businesses in its immediate proximity of Sal's Smokehouse and a bank. And by virtue of the location, the expanded hours would not create an undesirable change in character of the neighborhood, would not jeopardize the public health, welfare and safety of the community and would not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood. So I leave you with several concerns that we have with regards to hours in itself, but also in terms of the definition of um, operation versus closure.
Um, uh, let me first say that I don't want to get into it. You know how this, that this, you know, and you are fully aware this board has and I expect will continue where it is concerned about possible noise to impose hourly restrictions. Um, that's all I'm saying. I'm not going to discuss the legal, uh, the legalities of it right now. Uh, but my question for you is, this restaurant, and this particular restaurant, has been issued numerous violations for failing to close at the hours that it has. So in other words, it is not complying with the hours that have been imposed on it already. On what basis are we to assume that the expanded hours will be in fact complied with and that the owner will not continue to operate it the way the owner, that's the first question I have. If the owner will not continue to operate it when the owner wants to, regardless of what the special permit says.
That's actually not a factual, um, that's an actually accurate chair and I respectfully disagree with.
We had a new violation this, this, the last week or two, there was a violation for being open after hours.
Chair, what, what I'm, if I may, the previous violations that you make reference to, well, let, let's take a step back. Are we talking about why the zoning board of appeals should trust my client with expanded hours? Or why are we hearing this this evening? I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure I understand what we're.
No, I am asking you, you want us to extend the hours. Um, and my first question is, when you extend hours, the, when you issue, or when the board issues a resolution and sets conditions, the conditions assume are premised on the principle that the recipient of the special permit will in fact conduct their, it's, it's business in accordance with the resolution. Now with respect to the hours that were imposed in the prior resolution, the owner has not in fact um, conducted its business in accordance with those hours based on the violations that have been issued. So my question for you is, now you're saying, okay, we're going to make it later. But on what basis are we to assume that with the later hours, the owner will in fact comply with those restrictions?
Because we have not been, that's a very, thank you, Chair Kramer for asking that. The, there is no proof, or I should say, there is no historical context, what we have it. Now, let me explain to you why. Let me explain to you why. I know you, let me explain to you why.
Explain to me why.
First of all, the violations that were issued were based on the wrong resolution. The hours were not correct. That's number one. Number two.
Excuse me, in what way were the hours not correct?
Because it made reference to the wrong resolution, Chair. The hours made reference to in the, the uh, village complaints were making reference to the resolution passed prior to my clients.
The resolution, you've said that the resolution passed bef, and, and the resolution that you submitted showed that the hours for Cafe Mozart were longer than the hours for your client. Therefore, if your client violated the longer hours, it de fat, as a matter of whatever, as a fact, violated the hours that were in this resolution. Just because the uh, police or whoever recited the wrong resolution in the violation may mean that the violation was not correct, but it doesn't mean that your client did not violate the hours.
There was a different tenant in there before, this one and both Cafe Mozart, right?
Yeah, if I may, I'm making reference to Sweet Symphony LLC from Moonlight on the Avenue, which was passed on May third, two thousand eighteen. The hours that were quoted and made reference to in the violations were made reference to in this resolution. We have different hours.
And what were the hours in that resolution?
The hours in this resolution were specifically Monday through Thursday, ten thirty to ten PM, Friday, ten thirty to eleven thirty, Saturday, nine AM to eleven thirty.
And that is the hours that your client was limited to?
That's, no, we weren't. Chair, I'm looking at November fifth, we were permitted to operate.
Till ten PM, Monday through Thursday, to, on Friday to eleven thirty, on Saturday to.
The date, the date with which the violations were issued, we were permitted to be open until eleven thirty. Some of these violations were issued at ten o'clock, ten thirty. Some of them, there was a one minute difference. And, and if I may, if I may, there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. There were eleven time violations. Only two, only two had weight. That's it. Okay, only two. The rest were gone. The rest were dismissed.
And were they dismissed because he, the, the, the village patrol, as you seem to be indicating cited the wrong resolution? Or because in fact, they were open when they were permitted to be open?
Well, one of them was because it had to do with property being placed in front of a bank.
I'm not asking you about anything other than hours.
Not that one, one had to do with an hour. And even that, and even that, quite frankly, Chair, I, to my chagrin, because operation does not mean closed. Operation is not defined in our code. The operation is, has absolutely, there's nothing in the resolution that stated that the premises had to be vacated at a certain time. You could walk into a restaurant at ten twenty-nine, place an order, the kitchen is closed thereafter. That does not mean that everybody has to vacate the premises. It means that if somebody walks in at ten thirty-one, they cannot be seated and they cannot order. All of us sitting on this call this evening on a Zoom call have been in a restaurant at one point or another where someone will come over and say, if you want anything else, please let us know. The kitchen's going to be closing. Or if you try to walk in, we cannot seat you. So there's, I, 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 I beg to differ in terms of operation versus closure. And I don't blame you, Chair. I don't blame the zoning board. It's our code. Our code does not specify what hours of operation means. And my clients certainly shouldn't be prejudiced by that.
I, I'm not sure why that's relevant. Um, there's nobody's assuming blame. There is no blame at here. There's only, the only blame that would be here is if someone doesn't follow the resolution. So you didn't really answer my question, but let's move on from that. Does anyone else on the board have questions for the applicant?
So on the hours that you're requesting, you feel that this is sufficient. So you've, you've considered your business model and how many hours you need. And so you feel that you will not run into, you know, that this is going to work for you now because I do think that you're doing the right thing, that you got some violations or there's some confusion about what hours. And so thank you very much for coming to the ZBA and trying to straighten it out and, and request it. I think that, that, that's, that's the right way to, the right course of action. I also hear that you went to court to, to clear up some things. I think you also got your sidewalk cafe permit back. So it's, you're working through some things. Um, um, so, um, I think it's, I, I'm one. Um, so, um, I think it's, I, I'm one, oh, I, I'm also considering, you know, the things that you just said, Mr. Fats, about exactly when does operations end? Or could, could it be just people cleaning up? Could it doesn't even be your own staff that's just hanging out after work? We, we don't know. And so I would like to ask, um, though, from a zoning point of view, if we did extend the hours to what you asked, would you have any problem if we asked at a certain time of night that your doors and windows closed?
Absolutely not. No problem.
Sort of to 2:30, but at midnight, you gotta keep them, windows and doors closed, just to make sure it's a peaceful atmosphere for everybody else.
We've been, and I've had the good fortune of representing other establishments in the community, as you know, and absolutely. My, my client understands that at, at 12 o'clock, does, do they have to have music? Absolutely not. Again, we are in the Village of Merrick, we are suburbia, but we're also in the commercial district. We understand that. But if that was a requisite, so that my client could operate, remember it's getting colder too. So we're going to be indoors more, people are vaccinated, the dynamics are going to be different, um, this year again. But absolutely, I've spoken with my client about that and whatever requisites would be necessary, we would follow. And, and I want to point out, that's the good news. That's the silver lining here is the violations that we've been making reference to haven't come from complaints about noise or anything else. Near observations, yes. By either, whether this is a village code officer or police, yes. But in, in, and that's also a very good point is fortunately, we were very successful in court because we had documentation and photographs and, and of the interior reflecting that individuals that were in there were actually employees. They weren't even guests. So fortunately, my client had the wherewithal to preserve this and we were able to establish that. But the bigger question, I agree, is what is hours of operation? Even if you said to us, we want everyone out by X Y. Okay. We got it clear. You shouldn't have anyone seated, the kitchen should be closed at, let's just say midnight. That we get that, that way we know at, at 11:15, we need to tell people, if you want dessert, you need to tell us now because the kitchen's closed at midnight. If you want us out at 1 o'clock or, or 12:30, we understand that. He will, he being my, the applicant will have everyone out. So I wanted to preface and, and Chair, getting back to what I wanted to preface. It's not a blame game. It's not at all. It, it, it just so happens through the judicial course and through the application and, and the um, uh, exercise of going through zoning board, I did my, I did my due diligence, I did some research on this and it is, it's, it is confusing. It is confusing of what's, what is, uh, operation, what is hours of closure? You know, is especially as it relates to having bodies in the, in the premises. And, and also in terms of the ability, if you're not interfering, if you're not creating an adverse impact to the neighbors. Where in the future do we, do we draw the line in terms of hours of operation? I definitely agree with you. I live here too. I don't want something that's going to disturb my peace and quiet, quite enjoying in the Village of Merrick. So I completely agree with you.
I have a question. I have a couple of questions. Uh, um, when you have these hours that you, you're seeking, what does it, how are you defining, um, hours of operation? At, at the time, will the kitchen be closed? Will employees, will the, um, establishment be closed? How are you defining it?
Because the rule of thumb that my client was doing was the kitchen or was closed. For example, at 10 o'clock, I'm just using at 10 o'clock, kitchen is closed. I roll in there at 10:01, sorry, you, A, you can't be seated and B, you're not ordering. At 9:55, if you're going to put, if you're going to come in, you better put, you have five minutes to put an order in because the kitchen's closing at, uh, at, at 10 o'clock. So I believe, and I, and, and correct me, Mike, if I'm wrong, that was the rule of thumb that you were applying, that the hours of operate, the kitchen was open between A and B. At B, anytime after that, you were not, A, you are not serving alcohol. B, you are not sir, uh, preparing food.
So in other words, you could sit, you maintain that the place could be open, but just as long as they weren't serving.
Ms. Newfield, I mean, that, if, for example, if you come in at 9:30 and you're, you've already ordered and you're sitting there, yes, open in the sense of you're, you're still dining, but could you order anything else? No, the kitchen is closed.
When does the actual operation stop then? When do they close the door if somebody wants to spend the evening sitting there?
Mike, I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna throw that to you as I'm not, I, I, how, how do you determine when it's time to leave?
Uh, good evening, everybody. So is this going based off the this, the previous hours or moving forward?
I, I think Mr. Newfield just asked you a very simple question. Can you explain? Okay, let's assume the time is 10 o'clock. That's the time you're supposed to close. Okay. At what point, I ordered dinner at 9:30. At what point do you say to your guests, patrons, okay?
On a, on a weekday when I'm supposed to be closed at 10 o'clock, my kitchen closes around 9:20, 9:30.
And what time do you, what, what time do people get asked to leave or do you tell them we're, we're closing out?
So that's the problem we're having. So it, uh, at the, the resolution says you have to have everybody out of there by 10 o'clock. For instance, but we stop, we stop taking, we stop taking orders at.
Mike, Mike, if I can, if I can, Mike, I think Mr. Phil is just asking, at what point do you tell your patrons? It's time to. Nice. Are, are we, are we hear what you're saying before, but I, I, I'm curious to know what time, what point? They're enjoying their evening, they finish their desserts, no more drinks. At what point are you able to say it's time to go?
10 o'clock. Uh, I didn't understand the question. Well.
Mike, maybe you can explain, maybe I'm not answering it right, but I know what you're saying, David. Mike, if the restaurant closes at 10, the kitchen at 10, I'm, I, I walk in at 9:30, I order, I'm sitting there with my friends. At what point, after the kitchen's closed, the bar is no longer serving? How long do you wait before you tell somebody, okay, you need to leave because the kitchen's now closed, we can't serve any more drinks? An hour, two hours? Can I sit there for four hours? At what point do you draw the line saying the kitchen's closed, bars closed, you need to leave?
That's what I'm saying. If people cook with, people walk in there at 9:30. I tell them my kitchen is closing, you gotta order, you gotta order. And then, uh, they, you know, I try to get them around 10, 10:15. Cause that's, that's what I was supposed to be closed by.
I would note that on prior resolutions, and I looked, I just went through a couple of the resolutions. We have specifically said that the hours of operation shall be X to Y and that food shall not be served and customers shall not be permitted within the premises outside of the hours of operation. So the hours of operation established customer hours did not limit when, um, I know there were some cases where we specifically limited, I believe, for, um, uh, Molly Spillane, we actually limited, but not everything. Most of the restaurants, we just said when you couldn't have customers. So you could stay cleaning past the closing time, but you couldn't have customers in there.
Chair, in all fairness, I, I, I know because I was, I believe I represented a couple of people that lived in proximity to Molly's. Um, yes, that was a very unique situation where you had an outdoor.
Yeah, so here, yeah, as Cafe Mozart, I'm looking at the Cafe Mozart resolution and it said, and food shall not be served and customers shall not be permitted within the premises outside of the hours of operation. So the hours of operation are X to Y and when it's Y, everyone, all the customers have to leave. But the cleanup can take place and your employees can stay there and wash the floors and do whatever else they do to clean up. There was no restriction in general on that. So I think.
If we've asked him to close the windows and doors and customers linger, what does it matter to? In a zoning sense, what does it matter how much longer that they linger? Like maybe not allow any more new people to come in. So you're not increasing a party, you're not creating some sort of situation. But as I hear this, um, and you were, it was helpful, Mr. Spats, to say, we've all had that and, you know, where we went late, we scrambled, we got some dinner and we're sitting in a restaurant. And it's hard, I know as a business owner say, oh, you gotta get up and leave now. Um, I'm probably not going to have a really good feeling about this restaurant that I got pushed out. So I'm starting to be aware of, are we getting a little intrusive? And I'm trying to weigh that next to what would be the impact zoning wise on the rest of the community, especially if we've asked that the windows and doors be closed. Don't think it really matters that people, how long they, they stay.
What we've noticed on our recommendations.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me just finish one. As long as, allowing more people to come in, even though you say, oh, we can't order, yeah, but I just want to come in and visit. Will you be creating a different kind of gathering space? But you're talking about the people who were customers who bought something and they're lingering past the time that they could order something.
Absolutely, Ms. Jürgen.
Um, what we know, what we have said in the past and what members of this board have specifically been concerned about and have pointed out. Actually, I never did. Other members of the board did in fact say that is yes, but people are making noise, notwithstanding that the windows are supposed to be closed and the doors are supposed to be closed. Lots of noise comes out when you open the doors and people come in and go out. So at, you're not letting new customers in as people leave, somebody leaves at just at closing time. Other people are still there, they're still making noise. They're having a good time, they're still making noise. So if we're going to establish hours that we want, then I think that we have, if we're going to, and that's up to, we'll have to figure that out. Then I think we need to leave the way we have done it on several, which is at the hours of operation, whatever we agree to is the hours at which customers have to be gone. And generally, if the restaurant, if you want customers out of there at 1 o'clock, you don't close the kitchen at a quarter to one. You close the kitchen sufficiently in advance and that is what is done in a lot of restaurants. They close the kitchen sufficiently in advance. Yes, the restaurant, you could be there till 1 o'clock, but kitchen is closing at 11:30. Kitchen is closing at 11:30 in the, I don't know what the right hour is. Then presumably people are not sitting there for two hours when they finish their food and finish their drink. It's not.
Yeah, I would just, I just wanted to just say, I completely agree with what the chair said because the cases that uphold the right to have hours, and there are cases that completely always say this, are based upon the operation's adverse effects upon the neighborhood and others. Well, those, it really doesn't matter to somebody who's the recipient of the noise or the problem that the person has already ordered or hasn't ordered. And I think it's a cutoff date for operations. It's always been that way. And I, I think that they should just tell people, listen, um, the kitchen closes at 9:30 and the restaurant closes at 10:30 and whatever hours it is. And people say, fine, they understand that. Otherwise, you're just creating the problem. But you can't just say, well, stay open as long as you want to hang out here. That's the problem. People can hang out and they could be, you know, whatever. So.
Mr. Newfield, I, 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 I agree with you and I agree with Chair and, and, uh.
I thought you earlier said that we couldn't control the hours when I heard you say that and I don't see the cases. Since you said that, and I'm finding case after case in the second department that actually says, uh, limited operations is, is, is confirmed. The condition is proper because it relates directly to the use of the property and there's an intended to protect the neighboring residential properties and possible adverse effects to the petitioners' operations such as anticipating increase in traffic, congestion, parking, noise, et cetera. So I'm, I don't, I'm not following, I didn't follow you when you said we couldn't do that because I think we absolutely can.
This is your field. I'm not saying you can't, but there has to be a direct nexus to the traffic and adverse impact. It can't be speculative. It has to be, there has to be a direct nexus. I'm not disagreeing with what you just said, absolutely. And I will be more than happy. Again, this is more academic. I'll be more than happy to forward my case law to your attorney for ZBA so it can be reviewed. It's very clear and precise.
It can't be speculative, but I'm not sure you have to have proof. Who it will affect and what day it will affect them and how. Send the cases, send them to the board, please. Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay.
Um, I have, uh, two other questions, um, for the applicant. You said that you wanted to be the same hours as Cafe Mozart, but Cafe Mozart closed at 1 on Friday and Saturday and you want to close at 2 on Friday and Saturday. So that doesn't sound the same. And the second thing is, you just referred to the moonlight on the, whatever that moonlight restaurant was closed. But I did not see the moonlight on the avenue resolution in the package. So if you could please send the moonlight on the avenue resolution to the board because I don't believe it's in the package.
Believe it's actually, it's on your, um.
And if I missed it, please let me know where it is because I don't see.
It was, uh, it's been downloaded on the, the Merrick Village, uh, material.
That's what I'm looking at now and I just don't see it.
Okay, uh, Chair, I, I, I can, I'll be happy to scan if I'm sending Charlie right now.
Sometimes it's within an application, it's within the whole application.
Yeah, no, no, I went through, there's lots of resolutions and there's duplicates of a lot of resolutions. But they all seem to be the Cafe Mozart.
That's where I found it, but I'll, I'll, I'll make a copy. I'll send it to you.
Thank you. So the, but now the first question about the 2 AM versus 1 AM.
Uh, so I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying multitask. I, 1 AM, 2 AM. So it wouldn't be identical to the Cafe Mozart. My client has asked that he maintain hours to 2 AM. But let me assure you, and I'm pretty, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, if you were able to get similar hours to that, you'd be pretty happy. Am I correct?
Correct.
Exactly.
But.
I understand, we understand ideally too, but listen, this is a dialogue. We're having a dialogue. We're having, we're doing our application and it's important to, you receptive to.
I'm sorry, I just one, just want to point out something. So on, I only have music playing Fridays and Saturday nights and, and I don't have windows, open windows. And those nights I will be closing the door at 10 o'clock. So I was be, I was closing the doors at 10 o'clock, an hour and a half before closing. So I want to point that out.
I just have one question and I, I know the answer to this, but I think it'd be great to have it clarified on the record. You do have a valid special use permit at the moment and you're not seeking a renewal. This is the amendment of the valid special use permit?
Yes, uh, counsel, that is absolutely correct. Our, our resolution was given and granted November 5th, 2020. Uh, my client, uh, came to me, um, specifically as a result of some of the issues and misunderstandings in the past, seeking the additional hours of operation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, um, about the parcel history. It looks like there's one open item for, um, a sign without a permit issued to 1721.
I don't know anything about that. It's very, uh, Mike, did you go to the BAR?
That's, I don't think that's for.
Board of Architecture review?
That's, that's not this location.
It, um, it says, hold on.
That's for 419 Merrick Ave.
It says 308 Merrick Avenue.
No, we got, we have the sign approved.
Well, that's, I'm just reading, it was in the packet and it says addressed 308 Merrick Avenue. Unit 31. Issue date 217.
I'm sorry, I'm not aware of that.
And I don't know what to say. It was in our, it was in our packet.
What's the date of the, of the, um, violations that you have in front of you, Greta?
It was 21721.
We have no one from the building department here to, to, uh, I know we have a nice planner here, but we don't have anybody from the building department to give us any information about.
Is there anybody, um, online? No, not tonight?
Not tonight. I don't know. I don't, I think, I think the, the, the changing of the date led to the, the not being able to get one.
Okay.
Well, certainly. Whether or not that's the correct address or whether what exactly is.
And listen, if you were inclined so much as to proceed, uh, with this, obviously if there are any issues with the signage, it, we, we could be conditioned on my client promptly, Mike, I know this, addressing those issues. So we're not gonna, we, we don't want this to derail the, uh, application itself. But obviously if there's anything that needs to be addressed, we will address that.
It looks like I, I found, I found what Greta is talking about and it looks like it says complaint was closed on 519, 2021.
Where does it say that?
So I, I see where you're saying sign no permit, then directly underneath that it says 519, 2021. Complaint closed, although it's a different complaint.
Yeah, sidewalk cafe condition violation. I think that's different.
Hmm, that wasn't, we didn't resolve that until, uh.
And it's two different complaint numbers.
Yeah.
The, the, the cafe, the equip, the, uh, property that wasn't resolved until August. So no, that would not have been closed on. So I'm, I'm sorry, I stand corrected. That was July, Miss Hany. That was when he, he was able to get back his, um, application, sidewalk permit.
Yeah, that's not my, my question. The question is to sign, um, no permit for a sign. That's still open. Complaint number 210513. Complaint number twenty one zero five one three.
All right. So I guess because you have to check into that. So I think that's just something you'll have to do, Mr. Andrew. And, and, and check into that, find out if it is, in fact, if there, if that violation was issued, whether it was. Closed out, what the problem was and confirm whether or not, and cure it if it was, if it is correct. And let me rephrase that, cure it regardless of which property it was on.
Understood.
Anyone, anyone else on the board have any questions? Is there anybody from the public who wishes to address this application?
I don't see any raised hands.
Okay. Do we want to, what, what does anyone want to do? We're getting a couple of things. We're getting the topic up. Unless someone can find the moonlight on the avenue resolution, we've.
If you want, I could send it right now. I have it in my hand right here. I can send it to council and you can have it for this evening. I, I would respectfully ask that the public hearing be closed and proceed with.
Understood, but I just wondered if there's anything, so we, we need to get the sign. A violation, the question resolved. So I guess we certainly want to have an answer to that.
Would, would that, Chair, would that delay the closure of, of this matter and being able to render?
No, no, we could leave it open to get any, you know, a proof that you have in fact complied with. That you have removed the violation or that the violation was improperly issued. That's not a big deal. We can close the hearing and leave it if we want to. If, if the board members want to confirm that it's closed, we can do that. Or we can, we, if we decide to vote tonight, we can make it contingent on whatever we do. So that's not going to keep it. That's not going to delay us from closing it. I just want to know if there's anything else that any of the board members are looking for. Before we can, before we do it, that's all. So it was, was that it? Was there anything else that we wanted to get from the applicant? Um, before we, nope. So then I guess that's it. So then when, when we.
I do see one raised hand. There is no name attributed to this individual, but I can allow him to speak if he'd like.
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm going to let this person talk.
They should identify themselves. The person with the raised hand who wants to speak, if you would like to speak, yes, please identify yourself and then proceed.
Hi, everyone. This is Assistant Building Inspector Dennis Drogen. I was, I did the call in again and I just got a minute, so this is great. Thank you. Um, so can you repeat what the violation was for the sign?
It just said no permit.
It, it just says no permit?
Yeah.
Okay, so as far as I know, I, the, my tablet's not working and we're, we're having some difficulty with the laptop. But as far as I know, regarding that site, all permits have been filed. Um, if there's anything that is still open, um, it's just not closed yet at this point. Uh, they have a, a vertical sign, uh, or they, sorry, they have a, yeah, they have vertical sign on the side, which there was a permit for. And the awnings were also permitted. They did go to BAR, everything was seen through. So I don't believe they have any outstanding issues with their signage. So if I could just give you that, that, that's all I got. Um, as for the, the other violations, I've had you guys kind of talk through everything. Any other questions you have for me?
Anyone else? So you're here, you're just in the, so you're here, just making sure that you're here for the hearing in case we have anything else.
I'm, I'm here. I'm here. Yes.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing else that anybody. Wants to know from the applicant, does someone want to make a motion to close or what?
I'll make a motion to close.
There a second?
I second.
Okay, David.
Yes.
Greta. Meg. And I vote yes. Okay, this hearing is closed, subject to getting a copy of the. That moonlight on the avenue resolution, just because I wanted to see it for.
On its way. I'll, I'll send it to Charles right now.
Can you send it us as well so we can see it or?
Yeah, I don't think he can. He's going to send it to Charles and then Charlie will send it to us.
In this new field, I sent the other materials as well, but so by background, so Charles, Charles will have everything. And, and Chair, I'm going to just take a second because I've shared this with the Board of Trustees, Flim mitigation committee. Again, I see this not just as a business owner here in the village of Mariner, but as a resident. I think you all and the building department for being here tonight because it's not easy. We've been through a lot. But you are certainly the lifeline, part of the lifeline of this community. And it's, it's often that we forget, we take it for granted. About what the job and roles that you all have, the fact that we've been through so much, yet you have showed up here as a zoning board of appeals. I, we thank you. And as a community, we're very fortunate to have people who are dedicated. And to the building department, keep up the great work. We've been through a lot. So, I mean, I'm just saying this, I'm thinking, as I said, I was in front of the Board of Trustees and other committees. Um, it really does take a community. So thank you for keeping our village together and, and the vitality of this village. So. That's, that's my words for the night. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving to the next item on the agenda, case for a twenty twenty one. Five thirty nine Jefferson Avenue, which is an application for a variance. Is the applicant here?
Yes, hi, I'm here, Dino Croce.
Okay. I did just want to introduce, talk about, explain what the application is, please.
Sure, um, so.
Before you go forward, if I have a question for the chair, am I missing it? I can't locate the building, the actual application. Online.
I, I think I saw it. It's hard to remember. Hold on.
Because CEO, building determination surveys, I've seen the survey, the site plan.
It says building ZBA submittal.
Building ZBA.
Now I'm looking at the table of contents. I don't have it open in front of me.
Yeah, that's not it.
There it is. It's here. It's about, it's, it's on my, it's page five hundred and fifty five.
Oh, building submittal, is that the one?
Yeah, I think that's it for this application.
I just found it. It's. X.
Yeah, it's five fifty five. If you're looking at the PDF pages.
It's X two O two two?
Yep, that's the one.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you. There's two of that same number there. One's not it. Okay, got you. Thank you.
Are we going to be able to get the hard copies of these applications going?
I had thought that, just moving to that question, Amber had them available prior, in. August, prior to the September meeting. If you made it, she, and she had said that if you made arrangements to pick them up from her, she would have them. Now, whoever the next, we have, the, the next, so it would be Ashley. Madeline, I don't know someone at AKRF since they are interim planners until, unless and until the village hires a new planner. So, uh, Madeline, if you would let, and I will reach out to Ashley tomorrow to tell her, remind her that applications. So every application that has come in for the next meeting should have been as per our requirements. There should have been hard copies, you know, sufficient numbers of hard copies to distribute to everyone. They're not being distributed anymore. You just have to make arrangements with, I guess, Barbara Ritter. At the, the building department to pick up your hard copy. Um, but I will confirm with Ashley, we haven't, I don't know what any of the applications are for the next meeting. We have not seen them. I don't know if someone. If in fact they've been put to get, what's going on? So we have to find out. But I will confirm with Ashley that we do in fact have enough hard copies and, and that someone in the village can let everybody. The board members know that they can come and pick them up. Does that?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
My, my name is Peter Catazon, I'm from Catazon Engineering. I'm the engineer for the client and Dina Croce. Who's the homeowner. She's here on a call with us. Yes, we did submit hard copies of the applications per the request. If there's others, uh, other copies necessary. We're nearby, we're right in the village of Larchmont, so we can drop off any additional copies as necessary. But if you will permit me to share my screen, I'd like to walk you through the project and. Move forward. I think I'm sharing now. So the address is five thirty nine Jefferson Ave. And we have the adjoining properties. Uh, we, we took the pictures. We have an index of which way we're, we were shooting the photograph. So you can see here to the left of, of the five thirty nine is five forty one. Uh, this is the subject property, five thirty nine Jefferson Avenue. This view is a wide view of five forty one on the left, five thirty nine in the center. Five forty one on the right. And this is between five thirty nine and five thirty five. Um, and another one to the left side. So the.
Before you go, do you have any pictures? I didn't see them, but that doesn't mean they're not there. That were photos of the rear. Of the property.
We, I could share some with you.
So that we can see what the conditions are in the rear of the property and the adjacent property to the rear?
Yes, just give me one second to get those up for you. So here are a, a couple of photographs. This is looking. Let me take you to the site plan first and then I could show you what the pictures are. It might make better sense. So Jefferson Avenue is to the right. Uh, there's the dwelling. It kind of hugs, almost hugs the, the left. Side yard setback. And the two photographs that I'm going to share with you are from the, this rear slate patio. Uh, one of those is, is taken straight back to where the pool would be. And the other one is kind of the, the right side of, of the rear yard. So again, this is the first shot from the rear slate patio looking straight back. And then here's the, the other side. So on the right side of the, the lot, there's a little play area. Uh, left side is the, uh, small storage shed. So.
Is that the shed? Cause your survey. On your site plan has a shed. Is that on the property?
It is not.
No, no, who shed is that? Is that the railroad that it butts to the back?
So, yes, we've, we've contacted MTA. You know, to come visit the site. Uh, actually had proposed to perhaps purchase. Uh, that portion of their right of way. Um, the MTA railroad is elevation wise, much lower than the grade of this backyard. Uh, MTA at this point is not interested in selling. There are. Agreements that could be drafted up as, uh, uh, use and occupancy agreements. But you are correct, the, the shed is not on the property.
Who, who uses the shed?
The, the shed is used by my client. And, and the white fence.
Okay, well, so in other words, they're just using, the, the MTA is not using it, so they just put their shed there basically. Is that right?
Correct. So I'll just, just for ease of.
And this is how we purchased the property on four years ago. If the fence was in existence and the shed was on the property already.
So how do you get to the shed if there's a fence?
No, no, the fence is, the fence is past it. So.
Which shed are you talking about? And where's the, the fence looked like it was immediately.
If you look on the survey, Robin, uh, there's a reference to a shed. And you'll see it, but it's after the line, because it's after the one nine seven. It's after the.
Correct, but it says vinyl.
That's the gate that, I'm sorry, that you see where it says concrete pad and there's that to the right of it is that big line. Old line is my property line, but the gate is actually where, um, Peter is highlighting.
So, so what is this line where it says iron pin set and vinyl? What is that?
So the vinyl, the iron pin. Set is a property corner. There is a vinyl fence. Let me just trace it. So where it says vinyl, there's a gate here. Here's the vinyl fence. The vinyl fence continues to this point. The iron pin is their actual rear property corner.
I'm very, so now I'm really confused. Okay, let me, let me take, because this is, this is. So if you look and go back to your, so kind of move it, let me move it over. It's kind of went to the wrong direction. I don't know if I can. On my screen, move this. Yes, okay, so if you look at your, this, your, your site plan. Your survey, this is your survey. There is a dimension, uh, well, there's no dimension actually of your distance. But the, if you, so there is something that says iron pin set. Now that iron pin set is your property line or that iron pin set corner is not your property line.
This is the corner you're talking about?
No, the corner, the other corner up to the top.
Okay.
It's the same corner. It's the same respect.
So same effect.
That is not.
Those are the actual property corners.
Okay.
Let me just, there's, there's two parcels here, which if, if it's not confusing enough. Uh, but there are two parcels. One parcel is, is.
Yeah, you got that on there.
Yeah, it says one parcel, but that's, that doesn't, that's not my, that's not the issue. Here's my, let me repeat my question. That is parcel one, and then you have parcel two, and parcel two seems to be eleven, about twelve feet.
Yeah.
That's what the, the, the survey shows. So, so we've got your red circles on this. That is the property line, then, and right, and that says vinyl, so that is your vinyl fence. And what showed that white vinyl fence, I assume in the photos. Now. Now, the shed is beyond that.
I'm sorry, there is no vinyl fence though where those property points are. The vinyl fence is be, is, could you show her, Peter?
It starts, I'm going to trace the entire fence. Just let me get rid of this thing first. It's a little hard to draw on. But there's a gate, there's a fence and a gate here. I'm going to trace the whole property. This is the vinyl fence. It continues to here. At this point, it turns and stops at the shed. Then after the shed. At some point it picks up again and goes to this side and closes out.
Uh, so then I do not see on your survey, a dimension that equates to that. There was no line that shows that as the property line on this survey. There was no line that indicates the dimension of that property. Uh, the normal meets and bat, you know, the normal.
The shed is not on our property.
It's not on their property, Rob.
The shed, the, the shed is not on the property. That's.
That, that's not, so wait, then the, what is the vinyl fence? The vinyl fence incorporates something that's not on your property?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, Robin, there's another survey in the record. I'm trying to think of the same one. What's the date of the survey you have up there, sir?
Uh, there's two surveys. They're pretty much identical, except that one was, was updated recently.
Thirty two thousand twenty one, when I have.
Yeah, that's what this one says.
Take a look, so I understand it's very, it's a little bit unusual because you have parcel one and two, and then you have. It's eleven point nine nine feet on one side and twelve on the other, and then. it's eleven point nine nine feet on one side and twelve on the other. And then you have this entire rectangle that seems fenced in. That's an appendage, but not your property. So basically it's property that's not used by the owner. It's used by you.
Right, basically, it's MTA property.
Now, does MTA own the property?
Yes.
Okay, so now going back to your new site, the, the site plan that shows the pool.
Correct, the pool is entirely
So the fence, what, wait, the fence that is seen in the photographs, that white vinyl fence that is seen in the photograph, I'll call this the green, the MTA area. That fence includes the MTA property?
Correct.
Okay, so now my question is, now, and I've got one about the site plan. So now you go back to your site plan. Sorry, I got probably
No, no, we'll do whatever you need to see.
Um, so now your property here. Now, are you going to put, isn't there must, there's a requirement. I don't know whether it's, I don't know if it's in the village code, if it's state building code, because there are requirements. You have a pool that has to be fenced in. Are you proposing a new fence for that, that is your property? Are you planning on leaving the same vinyl fence that includes the MTA property? What are you going to do about fencing for the pool?
We're proposing to leave the fence as it is, with the exception of the gates at the driveway and at the side yard. Those would have to be self-closing.
So in other words, your fence around the pool is effectively going to be on the MTA's property on the, the west side. Yeah, I got you.
And does that meet code? Because I, I don't know what the requirements are for the pool fence, building inspector?
So that he can be doing this, his variance really, if he owns, if you own the MTA property, you wouldn't need the
We wouldn't need a variance.
Right, but they don't own the MTA property.
I know, so therefore their property ends one, less than two feet beyond the pool.
Yeah, my concern is, I, my question relates to the fence. Does putting a fence around the MTA property when it isn't their property comply with the village? With respect to fencing of pools, pools are dangerous. So I'm, I'm just concerned. A building inspector, are you there?
So you want to know whether or not the code requires you to have the fence on the property?
Yes, that's
That's really what you're saying.
Correct.
So, hi, this is, this is Dennis Drogen, the assistant building inspector. So I, I've been trying to talk the whole time, but apparently I've done my fault. So, so their application, not including the MTA property at all, at all. So that's completely excluded. Where they have their fence and everything, you know, that's a different story. They shouldn't have a fence there. That's MTA's responsibility. The shed that's on MTA's property, that's something MTA has to work out. If they've been using this property for so long, they got to work out that with the MTA. To simplify their application in, in best terms is that they do not meet the rear setback for the swimming pool.
Yeah, we know.
To place.
Yeah, we know that, yeah.
That's it. So don't, don't, so where it says pin on the property line, uh, on the, on the survey where it says iron pin. An iron pin is normally placed for the survey, the, the surveyor saying that this is the property line. So that's their rear property line. Um, so that, that's the only thing you need to look at for the swimming pool itself. But for the fence, if they are fencing in the property that goes back to the MTA and around and looping through the whole property, and that's their fence enclosure for the swimming pool. You know, technically, the, you know, MTA can say, you know, we don't want this fence here. It's gone. You know, we, we haven't used this property for twenty, forty years, but today we've decided that we're taking it back. Now their pool won't meet New York State Building Code because the, their enclosure would be broken. So, you know, when you are, when you are making a decision on this, let's, let's just put that in writing that, you know, we're okay with, or however you decide for the pool setback, if you allow it, just make sure that we have in writing that if for some reason the MTA decides to add another track or remove all of that soil and, and, and do some work there, that they would have to move their fencing closure to encapsulate the pool. You know, so if they have use of it, that's one thing, but if, if we don't have that in writing, you know, it, you know, they're on somebody else's property and they're encroaching on somebody else's property.
Thank you. That was my question. That's what I was
Three hundred, three hundred dash two of the code provides that every private pool has to have the fence. It doesn't say, I guess it's an interpretation, I remember the rest of it, but it doesn't say that it has to be on their property.
That's fine.
Yeah. I guess the bigger issue is
I wouldn't be giving, if somebody put in for a fence permit, which they would, I wouldn't be giving them permission to put a fence on somebody else's property.
But if it's already there.
You know what, despite that, you know, once, once you make a decision and, and however you decide to word it, once it comes to me to, or, or possibly Frank, the building inspector, he can use this discretion. But for myself personally, I would not accept it unless I get some type of documentation from Metro North stating that they're allowing a fence to be built on somebody else's property. I mean, let's not call it Metro North, you know, let's call it the neighbor to the right. I decided that I want to put a pool in. I'm going to put a fence on their property as well. It needs to be, it needs to be copasthetic with the neighbor next door. You know, they need to have an understanding and
What happens if your neighbor has a fence and you go to put a pool in? And my neighbor on the property line has a fence. I don't have to put a second fence directly in front of it, do I?
You do. That belongs to that property owner.
What does it say that? I appreciate, but that's So there would be two fences? Next to each other.
That's, that's beyond your, that's beyond you guys. So that's with New York State Building Code. I can't give you the, the, the chapter and section. But the pool enclosure must be kept and maintained by the property owner that, that has that pool. In which if, if any point it gets filled in, altered or changed, then the pool enclosure would be looked at at that time as well.
Well then, I think if, if that's what the state code says, and that's what's binding without a variant, then I'm not sure. Can we see that? Cause I
We don't apply building code. That's not for
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
Makes sense. It would, or we put something in there that fencing shall comply with all requirements as determined by the building inspector and leave it completely up to them.
Yeah, but he's saying he wouldn't agree with it.
No, no, he's saying he wouldn't agree with this fence, but we're not determining where the fence is. Dennis is saying that he would want the fence to be put one point nine seven feet behind the pool, which is their property line. So that is something that Dennis and the applicant will have to work out and it'll go where it'll go. So what we would, we wouldn't say that they develop in accordance with the site plan, since the site plan, I mean, to the extent we say that, we would have to make clear that however the fence shall be as required by the code, as determined by the building inspector, I think is what we'd have to say.
So if I could just, I, I, I don't know where, why the requirement is there, but okay. If I could just add to that, the fence is existing. I understand. Thank you for the, Dennis, for the excellent explanation of, of the fencing requirements. We have contacted MTA. MTA has been to the site. They've met with, with my clients. And, you know, they are aware of the fence. So a couple of things. One is where the pool and any sidewalk around it is entirely on the property. So in the event, worst case scenario that we had to relocate the fence, we could do that without impact to the pool. Of course, you know, they have backyard there that's not theirs, but they're utilizing. It's not utilized by anyone else. We can try to reach out to the MTA again and see if they would, you know, which I think they would entertain a written agreement, a use and occupancy agreement. We could chase that down. Ideally, you know, we would like to leave the fence as it is. But certainly if, if, if something, you know, as, as the example was used, that the MTA now wants to use this right away, you know, putting a fence along our property line does not impact, you know, the, the pool could stay right where it is.
Yeah, but you don't need to move the fence. What, what, what you could do is just put a fence there, a small fence around, the required fence around the pool directly. Like a one that you can see through, et cetera. And then you have your yard that goes on to where you've been using it. Or you can deal with it another way. That's up to you. Okay.
Madam Chairndaeus, so just, just to go back to what I said. If, if you do get to grant them the variance for the pool and the location in the rear, that they don't make the clearance for, I'm okay with them having the fence in the rear of the property. They can obtain some documentation from Metro North. But one day, if they do decide that Metro, Metro North comes down and decides to reclaim all of that, that property land that people have been using, just, you know, we'll have it in writing that they need to move the fence. So there's no debate later. That's, that's it.
Well, they have to install their own fence. It's not really a move.
Exactly. So that, that PVC fence, I believe, belongs to the homeowner now. Maybe they purchased the house with it there in play. But, you know, either way, we just want to make sure that that pool enclosure gets moved. So that, that would just all be in the wording.
So you would want to use, so basically that would be where you would move the, they would have to install a fence in the event that MTA wanted them off the property or MTA removed the fence. I mean, they could go out one morning and remove it, right?
Exactly. Yeah, they can. They can.
Maybe they've got rights to it at this point. That's their issue. Real property action proceeding. Well, it does have a construct, something structures on it. So that does give them some interesting issues. All right, got you. Okay.
All right, thanks.
I do have one question though, maybe for the applicant. I'm very confused about, because I've noticed this lately, the past year. Is lately I've seen that the planning board is requiring site plan approval on pools.
Well, we, we've made an application to the
My question is, i- is, that was never the case in the past. And they also wanted to impose a special permit requirement, which we rejected as a board, saying it wasn't required. Do they require site, has an application being made? Have you been told that an application must be made or has one been made?
No, we, it's, it's a little bit of a long history with this project. The applicants actually received a building permit for an above ground pool at approximately this location. When they talked to the pool company, the newer type pools can have, you know, they could be partially buried. They could be fully buried. So, you know, they decided that they would, for not a lot more up cost, that they would do it as an in-ground pool. So that's when we went back to the building department and we filed an application for the, for the, for a pool permit. So the first pool permit is, I'm not sure if they closed it out or if it's, it's still an open permit, but that pool was never constructed. Uh, this is a new pool permit with a new application fee, new application. We were never directed to the planning board.
Yeah, I don't, I, I've noticed that lately that I see signs saying it's before the planning board. And I have no idea why they've started to do that, because to my knowledge, they never did in the past. You know that or?
Yeah, you know, I've had some back and forth with my colleague, Teresa on this. I don't think it's a mechanism of the pool, but it's a mechanism of how much ground disturbance there is. And there's a threshold of ground disturbance in the code that requires planning board approval. So it's not related to the pool itself. It's related to ground disturbance and stormwater management.
When you get a chance, if maybe she could just send me the, the code section, I'll know.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay.
So in addition to the pool, which is the subject of this application, we are also providing some stormwater management to make up for the additional impervious. Of course, when it rains, the pool is self-contained. So if you get two inches of water, the water would rise two inches in a pool. But, you know, we still treat that as impervious as required by the, the code and still have to provide stormwater management mitigation for that.
And now studies about that, but could you explain exactly what you're doing to remedy the increase in impervious surface? Because
Sure. So the, the backyard is relatively flat. And we are installing four subsurface detention units. This is a section of those units. There are a HDPE polyethylene arch, if you may. They're about thirty inches high. There's stone beneath them. There's stone around them, stone on top. And then we'll put topsoil seed on it. So as far as anyone's concerned, it's, it's invisible. What you would see from the surface is just a small drain in the rear yard. So any runoff from the patio, from the pool would run to this drain. And there is an existing pipe that discharges onto the railroad right away, which is a drainage pipe that we're just tying into that. We've modeled the required stormwater storms, the one, ten and hundred here in accordance with the code and with the E C standards. Although this is under an acre, doesn't require D C permit, but all of our post development flows are below what's coming off the road, the, the property now in that direction. So we are reducing, you know, the slightest amount, the stormwater runoff that exits to the rear.
We want to ask if there's anybody in the public wants to speak?
Here on mute. Anybody else? Is there anybody else on the board who has any questions? Do any of the board members have questions for the applicant? Okay, is there anybody else in there? We got the public. Is anybody from the public have, want to speak on this? I don't see any hands. All right. Does the applicant have anything else they want to say before, or have you finished?
Um, unless there's any questions for me that this board has, I would request that the public hear and be closed.
I, I have, I do have one more question. Again, it's a whole about the property. Sorry, I was very confused. So the, the, the train is here, correct?
The train is way, you know, what would help is maybe an aerial.
Yeah. You put one on, because I, I, I just had one up.
I think I could get one for
If I email one to somewhere and it's
I thought we had a requirement that you had to submit an aerial as part of the application.
Invisible, that's all.
Yeah, it's, it's, well, you could see it here. This is the, the requirement for the, the plan view and I mean, it doesn't, the MTA right away, you could see it's right up against their property line. But the train tracks themselves are not really very visible or visible at all.
If you look on the Google map, they're very good.
Yeah, I'm
Not the map, if you go to the aerial.
Yeah.
Yeah, here we go. So here's five thirty-nine Jefferson Avenue. And this is kind of the limit of their fence. You could see, I think there's a distance. I'm going to say measured distance, but just for the purpose of drawing a line. But it seems like this might be where the end of the fence is, plus or minus. And you could see it's, it's quite far to the, you know, railroad track. So
I just, yeah, there's no, okay. That's fine.
Let's, let's just go. I don't know, call it, this is not that accurate. Maybe this shoves over a little bit. So call it forty feet plus or minus to the actual travel way of, of the tracks from where the vinyl fence is now. Then you could also, you know, there's, there's various encroachments. Then you could also, you know, there's there's various encroachments, you know, along the MTA right away.
So, Madam Chair, I hope I answered your question.
You did. That's fine. Thank you. Yes, you did. Um if no one else does have any questions, doesn't seem like anyone else, nobody from the public or someone someone want to make a motion to close if that's.
I have just one question, and that is with the storm management system that you described. I think you said that there was um a drainage pipe that was going to go through the MTA's property.
It's it's an existing pipe. It's an existing and it's a small pipe. It's not. It's I think it's a four inch or six inch. Uh which we're just tying into that. But it it basically, it basically exits the slope just beyond their fence, probably. Ten feet beyond their fence. Um you could see a a white pipe protruding from the slope.
Have you been using that pipe?
The pipe is an inactive drainage pipe that's been there since my client.
Active or inactive?
Active.
Okay, so you the the property owner has been using that pipe?
Yes.
Okay.
Gotcha. Uh somebody want to make a motion to close?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right, Ma- Meg.
Yes.
Greta.
Yep.
David.
Yeah.
I vote yes as well. This public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is um case. Seven S P twenty fifteen, four forty-eight Merrick Avenue for renewal of a special permit.
Okay, I am promoting to panelist Mike Relia.
You're on mute, Mike?
I don't think he's aware we're here.
He is. You have to unmute yourself, Mike.
Madeline, is it possible for you to unmute him?
No, I can't. I can ask him to unmute.
Wait, can you yell out the window?
There he is. He's unmuted. We can't hear you, Mike.
Hello?
Mike, we can't hear you. I don't know if you can hear us. You can't hear us.
Yeah, let's write on my note. We'll hold it up to the screen.
If you'd like to call in, I can um.
I think he's looking, trying to figure out what the problem is. He he's heard us usually.
Hey, you have any highlighters or something?
Can you just dial in, Mike, on the your phone?
You can use the chat function if you'd like.
Now, let me go reach out.
You could do, he could maybe do sign. I don't know how. That'd be interesting. Probably should have that available.
Can you elevate that phone number, I guess?
He says he's on the phone, five one. He's got his phone number in the chat. So I'm not sure what the problem is.
Okay. If you use your phone, we can hear you.
He says he's on the phone.
Now I think you have.
Okay, great.
So this morning, my computer microphone went. So I can use my phone, except my phone doesn't allow me to have this nice background, which I'm required to have. On all of these calls. So I apologize for your taking a minute extra of your time, but uh never. Never ceases to amaze me, no matter how ready I am to do something. Uh thank you for your, thank you for your time. Uh just just quickly, so. We are looking for variance for the two hundred foot rule for Smash Burger is at four forty-eight America Avenue. Um we came in, the initial permit was came in in two thousand fifteen. The they changed ownership in two thousand eighteen, so there was a a special use permit. That was issued to the new owner on that premise for same purpose for Smash Burger. And there was a condition within that approval that asked for a uh to come back in three years and. Get a a another approval within the three years. So. Back in February, I started the conversation with Amber to get the approval. And through lots of different COVID-related odd things and technology things. And whether we are now here tonight. Trying to get the or asking permission to have the variance for the two hundred foot rule for Smash Burger.
Can I, you're, I I'm sorry, you just used the term variance, but it's it was an application for a special permit.
I'm sorry, special use permit, correct? My apologies.
Okay. Go ahead. You want to just explain what it is if anything's changed and?
No, nothing, nothing has changed. We're just following up on the requirement that was in the prior resolution in September of two thousand eighteen to come back in before you. Uh to ask for that. The one thing I would note um in in transparency is that, you know. We did expire September sixth uh twenty-one. However, uh through conversations with Amber and others, we were assured and because of the cancellation of September third. That that wasn't necessarily an issue um at this particular point. Uh however, I did want to note that and we did start the application process back in February. And concluded it a couple of different times, and now we're finally here.
Um the board has always taken the position, the village has taken the position that if as long as you filed your application timely. The fact that we haven't decided it. Within, you know, before it expires, you still can operate. So no.
Thank you.
No worries on that account. Does anybody on the board have any questions, comments?
I have a question. Um and this relates to. Um I think it's fine. I I realize that you're ongoing business and you're not changing anything and that we granted the special permit, so. This is no indication that we would not continue and grant your your request to continue on. But I do have a question um because um I'm concerned that your special permit, and this is not because of you, but because of the Z B A. Uh grants the special permit for a fast casual restaurant, and we don't have that in our code. I actually think that we should be granting special permits versus the fine terms in our code, not for things that. Clients come in, applicants come in and kind of make their own descriptors. So to that end, I would like to ask you, is the majority of your business eat in? Or is the majority of your business to be consumed outside the premises? Which is the greater percentage of your business?
I I would have to check on that, and and I don't know that I have that. I well, I know I don't have that information there. I would. Just in talking that through, be it a um fast food restaurant, there's only so much limited space and turnover and timeliness is is there. So I would imagine that there are a lot of um takeout um and or nowadays between DoorDash and and the other services that. That provide food. I I don't have a a a number on that, but uh. I guess a common sense tells me that we would have some.
Okay, I'm not saying that one way or the other would make any difference in in um renewing your special permit. I was asking that so that we can have the right categorization of your business.
Right, thank you.
Um no, does anyone else on the board have any questions? Uh is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this application?
I don't see anyone.
Okay, if someone make want to make a motion to close. I'll make a motion to close. I move that we close the public hearing on this application so we can.
Second.
Okay, exactly. Um David.
Yes, yes.
Meg.
Yes.
Greta.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right, the public hearing is closed. Whether we'll get to it tonight, I can't answer, but you can still operate, so don't worry.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of your time and and help with the the storm stuff, so thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is case. Is is no case number, four thirty-seven Ward Avenue, it's renewal of a special permit. Is the applicant here?
Yes, I'm promoting Alice Jane.
Hi, everybody, I'm Alice.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. So um I'm Alice's friend. I'm here to help her out because her uh, you know, her English is not uh. Not as good uh to uh answer any questions or to explain. Um so we are here to um, once again, good evening, everyone. Thanks for uh um having this hearing tonight. Uh we are here to request to for renewal of a special permit. Um to run a beauty spa at four thirty-seven Ward Avenue.
Other is has anything changed from your original application, what you want, your conditions or anything else? You want exactly the same thing, just renewed?
Yeah, nothing has changed, just the renewal because it expires uh on November eighth of this year.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
Yes, um as I understand from the original application, that um what you do is you provide massage services. And it said that that was a hundred percent what you do is massage services. And so I would I would say that the special permit that you were granted, we don't give special permits for beauty spas. It was actually off. For a massage establishment. So thank you very much for coming to us and you got your special permit. But I think the actual categorization is massage establishment. Um there are certain standards that go along with that. Um and so I believe that now that you're coming back, that now that you're open, you've been open for a few years. We need to uh check and make sure that you're complying with all the standards for that kind of establishment. And um I think that, so we need to ask you some questions about that. For instance, one of them was that you have. Um identified your building from the outside as a commercial establishment. And I don't know that you have a sign outside your your door saying spa or beauty salon or tranquil spa or or or. In some way designating the commercial use of your building.
My understanding is they have a so they're on the second floor at four thirty-seven. Uh there's a sign by the um by the window.
I drove by and I saw a little neon sign that said open. But didn't see any kind of designation of commercial, like a name like spa or spa or something.
What's such?
Oh, they have, they used to have one. Okay, maybe they have to put that back up then. So there should be a sign on the second. So there will be a sign on the second floor by the window. Uh so it's their business uh goes by tranquil spa, so that's what they're gonna have by the window then.
Okay, that's cool, but it um and Dave, if you're looking for, I think the standards are three forty-two dash forty-two point.
Forty-two point one.
Yeah, okay, so that's where I was reading from. So that would need to be there. Um also, thank you very much for providing us with your um licenses, the massage licenses from New York State. I also stand the standards that, how many employees do you have working at your establishment?
So it's um so Alice uh works, she's the owner and she works there. Um there's her partner, who also has a license, and there is a part-time employee. Um who does the cleaning, um you know, and. Um yeah, I guess cleaning and uh any really like washing and things like that.
Okay, so there's nobody else that is providing any any kind of massage or spa services or something there? Okay. Um I looked on your website, there was some testimonials and there was a number of names of of enjoying your services. So I just thought there might be some more employees because there were some other additional names there, but.
Yeah, that's what I'm understanding. So yeah, so Alice and Shen.
Okay, because it it um again, it's in our code besides the massage therapist license. For a New York State registration certification for each employee. I think that's something different. I don't know if you if you have that and and prominently display. That in your business.
Yeah, they have that uh license um displayed by the counter.
That's great, but there there seems to be a New York State registration certificate. Is that something different and that's for each employee? I I talked about the licenses and then I talked about the certificate. I am not that familiar with it. I did see a different standard there, so.
It does refer to both. It does refer to both.
Okay, so I will find out uh New York registration certificate.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. And then um it also asked you to provide information for um the Village Police Department. Were you aware of that? And.
Can you say that one more time?
Um it says according to our code that the owner um must. And anybody who works there must supply some information to the Village Police Department.
Okay.
We don't need that information ourselves, but we would need confirmation that you've complied with that standard and has have provided that to the Village Police Department.
So they need to go to the police department and.
Well, according to our village code, you anybody on the board who's reading along with me, if I don't have this right, please correct me. But does seem that um the Village Police is supposed to have a phone number and, you know, your home address. Your social security number and fingerprints.
And all of that may have been done. There's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's nothing that says that you didn't that that the that the owner didn't actually do all of this and comply with everything. So that.
I'll check whether that has all been that.
Right, so and again, we don't need any of that information.
Right.
Need confirmation that it was completed.
When was this establishment, when was the final, when was the former special permit issued?
Uh three years ago, so that was, I have it here. November one, two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, Meg, I have a question for you. Uh where does it say? That the signage has to be anywhere outside of the premises. It says here. Shall display in a prominent place. Visible to clients, the special use permit. No, this is but. So show have a visible signage indicating the existence of a commercial business. I don't understand what that means, and I couldn't, I would not.
You're saying whether it's interior or exterior?
Yeah, I don't under, I've never seen this before of anyone. I don't understand what that was.
I took that to mean. That. But I shouldn't have made the assumption. I made the assumption that it meant an exterior sign, but you tell.
I think the the concern, and I can tell you because I know I know when this came up in New York City, the concern that came up with respect to massage parlors. Was that it not be, and I and I remember we talked about some of this when this was here last time. The fact that it was not clearly not a residential bus use. You didn't want it to be. Um look like it was a residential premises, and that is what the goal of the, you know, that provision is.
So I could supply, I could then put the sign inside or by my door, inside the door. I don't. I mean, I'd need permission from my landlord. I'd need all this permission. We'd have signs all over the place every.
How about a sign in a window? You don't need, you need need permission to put an interior sign that shows through your window.
And the sign has to say what? This is a commercial.
It's a commercial space.
Right.
As I said, I think the sign is really just to make clear that it isn't a residential space, so it could say massage. But you know, a massage business.
It could say tranquil spa, and as I understand it, if you have the sign inside your window, you don't actually go to the V A R. And you don't need to have a sign permit, but you. As I understood, again, I could be wrong.
I don't know where you're getting that it has to say what kind of a business it is. It says.
It just says that, no, I was just making, I'm sorry. It needs to designate itself as a commercial space. I get offering that that's the name of their business. They could say tranquil spa. That's all.
Well, they could say the commercial. Well, they could say that commercial, this is a commercial business when you walk.
Sure, sure. I thought it would be nice.
We can play, we can display it on the window.
So it's just, I looked this up and these are the standards for the special permit and I didn't see, you know, that, that this had been complied with and so it's, and perhaps you have and you could just send it to us and show that it's all been complied with. It would be fine.
I think it would be helpful for me if you, you know, if you took that provision 342 dash 42 dot one and just went through all the items and then addressed those items. And then we can just check it off.
So, yeah, I think what, I think what, 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 you know, following up with mixing is so if you would, and if you don't have a copy of this, we will make sure that, that our attorney sends you a copy of the standards. So he can send you a copy of the standards. And if you would just you, you can discuss with the owner, you know, making sure if her English is not, I don't know if she'll, but if she doesn't understand.
I can help her out, yeah.
Help her understand and then have her go through everything that's in that list and make to confirm that she has done all of the things. And if she hasn't done any of them, then go do them. And if she has done all of them, then you can let us know that you have notified the police department, done X, Y, and Z, done all of the different things that it requires. And that's just to, and you could come back, you could send us a letter, something that says you have done all of these things and indicate exactly what you've done.
So tonight liaise with, I think Ashley was emailing with us after Amber has left. So can I ask Ashley for that code?
You could ask Ashley to send you the code. Madeline, if you would please let Ashley know or if you could send it to her.
Yes, and the code is 342 dash 42 point one.
And yeah, so if you could send that to them so that they can.
342 dash 42 dash one, sorry.
42 point.
Point one, okay. Thank you.
Will send you that.
That's all my questions. That's all I have to say.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Does anybody from the public wish to address this application? Okay, so board members, shall we? What do you want to do? Shall we we close the public, we have two choices. I think we can close the public hearing, but not decide it's subject to receiving a written letter from them, or we can leave it open. So if they don't want to write it, they can come next time and tell us what it is. Let me ask the applicant, which would you prefer to do? Would you prefer to give us something in writing or prefer to come next time? And because we're not going to vote today on this. In either case, we wouldn't vote until we have.
But you could continue business because you have the light.
Right.
Yeah. Do you want to do this verbally, like at the next meeting, or do you want to submit something in writing, which is easier for you?
I think we'll submit something in writing. That's probably easier. So once we receive that code, we'll do a checklist and then say, well, well, replies and we've complied with everything. And if you need anything else, then we can submit any proof or anything else you need.
But we might have, you know, we might have questions about what they're going to submit. I don't think we should close yet.
That's fine. I'm not saying we could close. I just wanted to know what we were, you know, we could do what we, you know, we don't have to close.
Right.
They can still submit a written to. Okay, so then if no one else has, if no one on the board and there's nobody from the public who wishes to address this. So you'll do that. So for the next meeting, if you would come back and you can submit it in writing is fine ahead of time. If that's easy for you, we don't have to go through everything at the meeting and just submit it ahead of time. Ashley will talk to you, you know, get back to you and you can talk to Ashley about what it is because the next meeting is in two weeks.
We'll do November for them?
Well, I think if they can give, if, if Ashley sends it to them tomorrow and they have in fact complied with everything. I think there's no reason they can't be on the next agenda. Even if it's.
Yeah, if you can put us on the next agenda and.
If it turns out they haven't done it something and they have to do it, that might take more time. But I think if they've done everything and it's really just confirming that they could do that in two weeks. Okay. All right. Okay. So then we will see you maybe hopefully in two weeks. And if not, then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bye. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have finished all the public, public hearings. I need a two-minute break or three-minute break. And then we'll start on the closed applications. There are only three, three closed applications. Having removed many of these from the thing. So I need to take a.
You don't need to tell us. You can do whatever you'd like. Just get up special permit. I never saw this before. This is they do a criminal record search? Do they do that for teachers, educational? I would.
No, it's because massage, massage parlors have historically, not currently, but historically massage parlors were associated with.
Let's call it it's a massage service. They're, they are a spa providing massage services. They don't call themselves a massage.
Now, because the term isn't used anymore, but the old, the historically, the theme called massage parlors was a front for a something that was providing something other than massage. And therefore, a lot, and that is absolutely true. There were huge issues of this all over about, and a lot of the massage establishments were in fact not really massage establishments. They were this other none. And therefore, all of these, I'm sure that's why they did it because I know that's why they've done it in other places to reflect.
I would think, yeah, I would think though that doing a criminal background search with all respect on other establishments and owners would be probably just as important or certainly particularly with children involved with things, more so than with adults. I quite understand that, but.
There may be something in the teacher licensing. We don't have that in front of us. That's not our issue here.
But there are other, I understand. But we do, we do schools.
We don't issue, you mean if, but we don't look at the teachers. We don't say that the.
I know we don't because there's no requirement. I'm just saying that I know we, the Montessori school, other schools have been before us. Seems to me I've got my grandchildren. I'd much rather have their teachers be checked than having people who do nails and massage, I mean, candleing, I think, but you know, that's all right. I once had an issue with a music teacher and I said, I don't know why they're not licensed. I said, you're alone with my child. And I had a lot of problems with one of them. And I.
You see it a lot in daycare establishment.
Yeah, exactly. I, I completely agree. I, it just seems, I, I think Robin's correct in what she's talking about, but it just seems a little bit on the, you know, I think daycare establishments are formed, if I had the choice, and I want to be clear between having the people who work at a daycare establishment to take care of four, five and six and seven-year-old kids or three-year-old kids versus people who go with adults who are asking them for massage. I would certainly opt for the daycare.
That's why I always get my babysitters from daycares because I know they've already had been background checked.
Cool. Taking a break? I got another, I take another pill from my mouth. Robin is, Charlie, how are you? Everyone's gone. Okay.
I'm here. I'm good. How are you doing?
Bad.
Yeah, I, I feel your pain with tooth stuff. I've had my number of dental issues.
This, when I was about 14 years old, I collected pennies and I threw this big jar of pennies up in the air to catch. And it was about, oh, it must have been about two feet wide. And while it was in the air, my footing slipped and it came down on my face. And it just chipped one tooth, which was amazing because everybody thought it was going to lose them all. And that's been perfect since then. I had that one repaired. And today, everything went, I guess yesterday, everything went awry. Such is life.
If you got that right, everything's unexpected.
Well, yeah, but the worst part was I went to see people and they go, well, we don't know what can be done. And I go, I'm sorry.
That's comforting.
You got it right, man. All they know is it's a lot of money and we don't have any clue if it can be repaired or what we can do. Uh huh.
That almost sounds like when you go to a law office and try to ask for an opinion.
Well, that's interesting because we ended up having that discussion because I said to him, I respected that he's not a magician because, you know, I said, I don't know, you ever get that I have clients and but such and such said he could assure me of that. I said, hire him. It's like a car, right? Same thing. How's your weather? Getting cooler up there now?
Uh, you know, we've actually got, actually the thunderstorm just started here. It's, it's been cooler, but today was awful hot. And so we got something passing through.
Wow, we had a rough one down here.
I say, hear that. It's unbelievable.
It was about as rough as, I mean, it was really, I mean, it was one of the saddest things I have ever seen in this village was you would go on our residential streets and they had trucks going by from the village to pick up stuff. People were putting sofas, furniture, I mean, carpeting. So.
I, the last time we had something up here was Hurricane Irene. And it was upstate New York and Vermont got just absolutely destroyed because things kept rushing down from the mountains. And it was uncontrolled. Wasn't so much the rain, but it was things coming down from the mountains that kind of did all the damage.
Yeah, there's a little river, we have Mamaroneck River. There's a little river that goes at the back of some shopping areas and parking lots. And you have to go up to the fence and you look down and you can see it sometimes. And it's a bad little thing. I mean, it's not something you'd see. And the day after, like all over up on, you could see it cresting over everything.
Yeah.
Scary.
Everything is all.
I'm installing a sump pump tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm learning all, I've decided plumbing is my new vacation.
My grandfather taught me years ago, you know, an Italian immigrant grandfather. He had a wet basement his entire life and the sump pumps always failed and never worked. So then he created a little channel in his basement. So the water would come in, go through his basement and then go out the other. He said, why try to pump it out when I can just let it run right through the basement? It's a little, you know, plumbing engineering right there.
You got it. All right, I'm taking a minute break. I'll be back.
All right, we'll see you soon.
Be well.
All right, board members, let me know when you're back, please. And we can recommence, reopen the, the meeting.
Nobody wants to sit all by themselves on Zoom, just like.
No, exactly. A company here, but whenever everybody's back. So just let me know is what I'm saying.
If anybody's, if anybody is watching the stream is like, oh, they're just watching me. Just being.
I like your necklace, by the way.
I actually, it's so, I so rarely get dressed. I was like, oh, I put a necklace.
These days you mean you so rarely, yes. So wait, just waiting for David to come back.
Robert, are you moved?
All right. I was just saying, I see you're back. Okay, I guess we're all here. We can restart. We can redo. We can continue. Everybody's ready? Okay, so the first closed application is 2 S P 2020 419 Mamaroneck Avenue. So we have a draft resolution. I believe I have to go find my draft resolutions.
Robin, what is that one?
I don't know. I actually don't see it. Looking at all the open draft resolutions and I don't see this one. Charlie, do we have a draft resolution on this?
It was in the email that I had sent. I can pull it up and share the screen if everyone would like.
Missed it.
This is for.
419 Mamaroneck. The Roaster, Roaster Cafe, right. I'm sorry, I had all the others open. I must have missed this.
Same thing. Exactly.
Do you like me to share the screen?
I don't, what board members, I mean, I'd rather just now that I'll just find it and.
One second, I'm gonna find one. There we go. I know. Which.
He sent it on.
Yeah, I got it here. I think I did. It's on the bottom, right, Chuck? Right? Yeah. No, it's not, it's not.
Yeah, it was all, it's all at the bottom of that email.
No, that's the jurisdiction. What? This was. Oh, okay. This is, you sent this on September 22?
Yeah, that sounds right.
It was like a long time. No? So which, which resident, it's the Mamaroneck Avenue, right? Is that what you said 419?
Yes.
Now, now there are two open items on this, according to the parcel history report. And the resolution said there were no open items. So that's.
So we did.
Question.
We did, I, I don't know if it was on our agenda, phone call or when it was, but we did speak with the building department and they had said that all violations had been closed.
But didn't vote on this?
We didn't vote on this. We just had a draft resolution.
Well, look at the draft.
That's an error. That's, that's there.
When you say we, you mean you, um.
No, because it says here, yes, no's in the bottom.
That's just part of the template.
Oh, okay. Oh, obviously yes and no. I'm sorry. I looked at the first one. You're right. I'm sorry, Charles. I saw yes, yes, yes. And I went, huh? But you have to go over. So it's yes or no, or abstain or not here. Got you.
I don't know if anyone.
You have to come out off of that because Abby's not here, so.
Yeah, I can, I will certainly take that off.
Some of them had Abby on it. Some of them had, didn't.
Anyone from the building department is still on. Doesn't look like it. If I look at the attendees.
I thought they said at the last meeting, I thought we discussed this and I thought what he said is that everything was closed, but that not everything had been removed or updated on the, on this list. I thought they said that at the last, at the July.
We had understood from the assistant building inspector last month.
Yeah, the last meeting.
Okay. Okay. So that's what.
Last meeting, yes.
The July meeting. So he said they were closed, but he said that everything was resolved, but it's a separate issue of removing the, or cleaning it up.
Okay.
So, okay.
All right.
I, I want to give it, so my only comment is I don't want to extend it. Given all of the issues, I would like to make it another three-year resolution. I don't want to grant a, a permanent one yet.
Okay. I have that in the resolution right now. The special use permit extension is granted for a term of three years from the date of this resolution. Change that to renew.
All right. It just, it's confusing because it says and shall terminate upon a change of use. Um, which implies that it is only terminates on the change of use. And then it says it's granted for a term of three years. I think you have to write it in a way that it's clear that's a term of three years, but notwithstanding the term, it shall terminate upon a change of use. Because otherwise it's a little, it's a little unclear.
Or just grant it for three years.
Right, but, but if, but if during those three years, they changed, they tried to change the use, then it would be terminate. They don't have a permanent right to the three years. So I think it says for a term of three years, provided that the use does not change is what it is.
Yep, I can make that change.
Um, something like that. Now, we just had this long discussion about hours of operation. So let's make it clear what we mean by hours of operation. And based on what we've done in other resolutions, I think what we need to say is that, that all, basically there's, there should be no, that all customers have to leave the business, the premises after those hours, that you can't have customers on the premises beyond those hours. It says nothing about when they can clean or anything like that. Uh, we also need to have the, uh, the provisions in here relating to closing windows and doors at ten o'clock.
But that was only if you have music, that we've done that. We've done ten o'clock if you're playing music indoors. I was suggesting that if anybody is asking us for something beyond midnight, that could be maybe any occurrence, but.
I understand, but I don't know if they're playing music and I don't know if they're going to. So I think we should just put it as a standard provision here. And limited to music, if there is music.
Or amplification. We said amplified sound, which all includes music or amplified sound.
Yes, but just because they have it, we don't know that they've done it till now. We don't want them to, I think it's reasonable to put that in.
And I understand that we should consider this to be clear that, um, you, you know, what does the hours of operations mean? But here he's like a breakfast lunch. Do we really care if he has people that stay till two P M or three P M?
No, we don't care. It's really the nighttime that we care about.
Yeah, so, um.
But I don't see how, I mean, if you, if you have some good idea for how we can distinguish that, that's fine. If we want to say the hours of operation shall not be later than, um, that past ten thirty, there should be nobody on the premises on any, you know, whatever. Um, we could say.
I have a hard time doing that. I'm actually getting one over that we should not be, uh, saying about what they do interior. I'm very fine with putting, saying closing walls and doors and windows. Um, I, I understand the argument that even when you open the door and you come out, but is a C two, the door leads to the Mamaroneck Avenue and it closes at ten thirty. I don't know.
I, I want to make this all consistent, so I would like to put in the operations and the point has to do with the same principle, which is concern about noise and impact on the community. And, um, the fact that they don't need to be open later doesn't change. It is still the same principle. If you want to say for here that, um, given that, because we don't want to establish a precedent, so they're ten, ten thirty and then they just, so what does that mean? I think we need to.
Okay, but, but this one is ten thirty and across the street, he's going to be open till one if we grant it or twelve. Some people are open till midnight. Why would we tell him, oh, but you can't, you don't have to get all your customers out by ten thirty because it might be disruptive. But we've given it to three other people on Mamaroneck Avenue that.
Hasn't asked for it. Sorry? We don't, we don't, we have historically given applicants more or less, you know, we've sometimes shortened hours, what they've asked for. Uh, he's only asking till ten thirty. If he wants to come back and ask for longer, that's fine.
I didn't quite finish. So what I was thinking was if we want to have some standardization, if we think it's disruptive after midnight, we put that in for everybody. You can't have people, uh, customers in your place of business past midnight or something like that. But if somebody's open till ten thirty and you have given out three or four to people that are open till twelve, I, I, I think that that's, why are we telling this person they can't even clean or have a staff party?
We're not telling them they can't clean. We're telling.
Sorry, you keep cutting me off before I finish a sentence. It's a little bit distracting to my brain as I'm trying to make my point. So I, I am very reluctant to start saying that you have to chase people out at ten thirty because you said that's how you operate your business. Um, if we want to try to do some standardization, like I said, like we usually do ten o'clock for music and we're trying to be standardized. That seems fair to me, but to, you know, I mean, I don't know how we tell these people like one, one o'clock. What, what is the hour that the last time that somebody could be there? So you're not going to put a, a standard at the end of one P M. They, they have to be out by two or they could be till ten. I'm just showing that it's a pretty difficult thing. And unless you're going to be a standardized time for everybody. And then we're starting to legislate if we say it's the same hour for everybody. So I, I, I have a real problem with trying to tell people like when they can clean. What if they wanted to renovate and, and paint their, you know, or, or move furniture around or something inside their space? And the best time to do it is between midnight and one in the morning. I, I, I really think that we're getting involved in their operations and preventing them from being able to run their business the way they should.
We have never told them when they could clean and nothing here tells them when they could clean, doesn't tell them when they can clean. It doesn't tell them when they can renovate. There are, there are other things that limit that. All this tell them is when they could have customers and operate the business, the business of providing food and beverages. That's what we're talking about, the operations. And that's all we've ever limited them to.
We have in the past indicated when people have to leave the premises.
We have, we have.
Done that because sometimes people stay and they'll, they'll have a large crew working and at night we've done it with restaurants. I bought the station and buy others and usually they say, then you have to close up within an hour so that it is otherwise. If you're, because part of the whole idea is that you're having people disturbed by it. So you can be disturbed by a large group. But certainly if you have, let's say, five or six people, they're deciding they're gonna shampoo rugs and work all night, you know, that's, you don't even do that.
So. So it's not going to be standard that it's, that customers need to leave an hour after the business operations close.
That's news. That's would be different from what we've ever done before. To the extent that we've defined operations, it's always been defined by when customers had to leave. Uh, Dave's point is there are specific applications like, um, uh, the restaurant by the train station where we specifically did have, and there were a couple others where we specifically limited the customers, the, the cleaning because the noise was, you know, carried and there were specific concerns. So I don't think, I don't think in the general we would want to do that.
I, since we have somewhere we specified, I wouldn't assume that because we said the hours of our operation are say until ten thirty P M. We did not say what we meant by it. Since we've had somewhere we said when the customers could leave, I'm not, I don't know for sure that that's what we voted on this or someone else voted on it. Were we all in agreement that that meant that customers have to leave by ten thirty? Or was that when the business operations have to close? So I wouldn't make that assumption that, that that's what the, this, this one and other ones say, or that's what board members intended when they voted on it. It's definitely ambiguous.
Well, it doesn't matter what board members intended when they voted on it last time because we're voting it on it again and we can determine what we want. So whether or not it was considered now, what we want to do, we can decide what we want to do. And if we don't want to limit the operations, that's something we don't have to do, but.
So what I would like to do, and I think is fair, is an hour after business operations end. Because in that way, I don't think that we're inhibiting anybody from having to chase customers out and actually lose a customer because they have to chase people out. So I think an hour after the business operations is something that's reasonable.
Um, I, I.
I don't even know that we have the right to do.
Uh, I, number one, I do think we have the right to do it if we're concerned about impact. There are, notwithstanding all the cases that Andrew mentioned, there are definitely cases the other way. They do allow you to impose hours. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that, um, I don't want to do a standard hour after if we're, you know, if we're telling them they have to, of like, for example, this one closes at ten thirty, but you're talking about general, something that's closing at one o'clock. I don't want to give them another hour. I think one o'clock is late enough and it's their, if that's their business and people know that they have to be out by one, then they'll know that's what they have to be at. It's up to the restaurant to ensure that its customers know that, so it doesn't have the problem. The problem arises when customers don't know and all of a sudden they're there. So I think, I, I don't want to do that as a, I don't want to do that.
Okay, but in this instance.
Maybe because it's earlier if you want to allow it, you know, I don't have a problem with that.
Also because we don't have the applicant in front of us to clarify, do you know what we mean by this? By ten thirty, we mean that you have to have all your customers out of the space. We don't have that person here, so there could lead to confusion because that he's taking your last order at ten thirty and doesn't realize he's supposed to have nobody sitting in his space at ten thirty.
This is the same applicant that was on the Barquilla and he said for Barquilla that he understood it to mean that.
No, but this is a different application, so.
I understand that, but I'm just saying what the applicant said. He understood hours of operation to mean on that one, which also didn't say exactly what it meant. But anyway, that's fine. I'm okay with, with not necessarily, if you want to make it a now, you make it. Greta and David, what do you think?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think both you and Meg, um, make some valid points, but I think a good compromise is to add to be, you know, very specific in the resolution, but then to add an extra hour because it is really early and it seems um, unreasonable to enforce, you know, ten thirty, which could have been meant, could be interpreted ambiguously by this particular applicant. And to give neighboring establishments two or three extra hours of operation. So I think that sounds like a, a reasonable compromise.
So you're not saying for every applicant, you're saying for this one to give them the extra. I just wanted to.
And then, and then when we have future applications, we have to, we have to have the conversation with each applicant.
Okay, that sounds reasonable to me. Uh, David?
Yeah, I'm good with a great.
How do we describe what operations are then to make sure that it's correct and that, that what?
Why don't we just say that this, that's a business, that the, uh.
Kitchen has to close by that hour.
The, the business has to close. It's a commercial business and it's got to close.
Well, no, no, but we're not saying that. What we're saying is that, if I understand what, what, what has been said is that at ten thirty, since those are the hours of operations, those are the hours at which new customers can come in and the kitchen has to stop serving. And that they have an extra hour, um, after ten thirty for the people to have to leave.
Well, you mean the customers or the people?
Customers, customers, customers.
The boys can stay all night?
We, we have not done anything about employees.
We have in the past with other.
I'm talking about here.
How about instead of the kitchen closes, it's, there's no more sales after this hours.
Yeah.
Customers enter and no more sales of any products, drinks or.
Absolutely. It has to be. And that they have an, or new customer, same thing. You can't have new customers coming in and no more. And the kitchen closes and then they have an hour.
Yeah, but if you say the kitchen closes, then you have to say the bar closes or.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant, you're right. You're right. You're right. I meant, when I said kitchen, I meant all foods, but all the, all the.
Food and beverage sales have to end because you might actually have, you know, prepackaged items and things that present.
Right.
So just so I'm clear, you only wanted that condition within the condition to apply to the Saturday and Sunday because on Saturday and Sundays it closes at ten thirty P M. And not the Monday through Friday where it closes at one P M.
I, I don't think we don't, we care about the rest of the week.
Okay. And the other one was closing windows and doors at ten P M. If there's amplified sound.
Correct.
Or music. Music or, because even acoustic music. Music or amplified, any kind of amplified sound.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. There are no other changes. Um, the board, uh, may wish to take a motion to vote on the application, the renewal?
Yep. Um, you have to correct Meg. She's secretary, not vice chair.
Okay.
Okay, someone, I'm, I'll make a motion to approve it as revised. To approve the resolution as revised in our discussion.
I'll second.
David?
Yep.
Greta?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So it is approved with changes. Wait, sorry, just give me a second. Okay, the next item on the agenda is case number, looking for the case. Where is it? Uh, we're taking this slightly. Actually, that's all that. Okay, me a second.
The next oldest one is the Beach Avenue.
I understand this. So we, I'm just, just, I understand that's what I was looking for. Uh, we're taking this slightly out of order if, if there's anybody following the order. We're gonna do one thirty Beach Avenue, which doesn't have a, a case number. So it's just one thirty Beach Avenue. And I believe that we have two draft resolutions. So we did just have the one revised. I don't remember what was circulated. Um, uh, Charlie, or we're both, are both in the public uh, notice or just the, the one that, uh, as, as Meg had revised it?
We had an.
What is in the?
So the resolution that was prepared by my office was made publicly available and I believe Meg asked Amber to also make her resolution available to the public. Um, if not, she definitely asked it to be made available to the applicant. And I believe Amber did follow through on that.
Didn't ask for it to be, that's wrong. I just asked for it to be added to the agenda materials.
Okay, so they're both, so there are both, they're both there.
Robin, you sent one out today?
I didn't send one out. I, I have to, I took, I had some comments which I'm going to discuss, but I didn't want to give it to you at the last, you know, at the absolute last. I don't know that anyone had a chance to review it. So I discussed my comments, um, here, but I, I did just want to, in case anyone wanted to read them ahead, you know, ahead. I, I didn't mean to, you know, because I know it was last minute. I didn't mean them to be. That's why I'm discussing it.
So in the interest of time, um, I would like to take like a little straw poll of our group here. Do we want to talk about the original resolution that, um, Charlie's office had put together? Or do you want to review the resolution that I put together?
I, I think we.
Greta, David?
Well, I could tell you that I have a lot of problems with the resolution as put together by Meg. Um, I don't know that I agree with everything in Charlie and the resolution is drafted by Charlie either. So, um, we can, excuse me, we can take up, we can take a start with Meg's, the resolution as put together by Meg, if that's what the rest of the board members want. Um, uh, uh, you know, I have a problem with both of them more.
Thing is that they're distinctly different in their findings. So I would think it would align with how people are finding it. It isn't just a language or a way to get that finding.
They are significantly different.
It makes a difference.
Correct. And I have a lot of problems with this one. I have fewer problems substantively with the one that Charlie prepared. Uh, David and Greta, what would you like to do, given what Meg is asking, which is a reasonable question?
Oh, why don't Meg present hers if you want? Oh, why doesn't Meg present hers if you want?
Yeah, I am happy looking at Meg's.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I will go with through with my comments. I will give my comments first, and the rest of you can give your comment. So um, if you pull out Meg's, I will start with, whereas unit one, unit B is comprised of approximately twenty four hundred square feet on three floors. I don't recall um, that we know any certainly, that we have the survey of factual information. We certainly don't have it in this new application, given that this information is not in the application. And the appeal that I don't believe it's in the application or appeal that was filed that we are faced with. Therefore, I don't think we can say that, because we are solely dependent on the information provided in this application. So I think this has to be, I think we have to not say that.
Where are you referring? Could you revert by page or something?
Um, the first, so the first, the second, whereas clause in Meg's revision says, whereas unit B at one thirty Beach Avenue is comprised of. Approximately twenty four hundred square feet located on three floors. So the twenty four hundred square feet was not in anything that the applicant submitted at this point in time. And since that's all that's before us right now, what the applicant submitted and not the facts underlying the original application, I don't see how we can say this.
There's not, do we not know that it's twenty four hundred feet?
How do we know it?
I'm asking, how do we know?
We only know it because in the original application, the one that the board decided on, that we approved, you know, that was approved. We may have had that information. I don't even remember. I didn't go back and look, so I don't know, but um.
Zoning board members are allowed to take into account their general knowledge of what's publicly available information. That's why they're local people. And they can take it in. I thought the case authority is always on that.
But we, we usually have a survey when we make that. We over always said, you need to give a survey. Obviously, no survey was provided here. So we're relying on something provided, some information. I don't remember specifically.
Find that, didn't the board find that in the past that it was twenty four hundred?
I don't know. I don't know.
It's what the applicant provided, but you're right. I don't know that we had a certified survey. So do you want to just say it's located on three floors? It's at one thirty Beach Avenue, it is on three four floors.
And that's.
Problem here. Uh, if we don't have a certified survey, so how do we know an address? How do we know this is really? I don't, all right, go ahead, I'm sorry. That's fine.
That that twenty four hundred number was in the prior resolution.
Yeah.
Um, and that is.
If it was in the prior resolution, then it could stay in here.
Yep, it is. I just checked it.
Yeah.
Okay, then it's okay to stay in here. Okay, um, next, whereas clause. Uh, whereas the property in which the premises is located is within the R five zoning district, but the premises. It's not located on a legally pre-existing non-conforming use of a lot, because that's just not correct. It is, the premises is part of a legal non-conforming use consisting of a two-family residential structure. Having three stories.
The fact that there's a third unit as well on the lot, that's what makes the whole lot, use of the lot, pre-existing non-conforming. Because there's actually a secondary structure for the third.
So then it should say, is part of a legal non-conforming use consisting of two structures. One of which.
You just don't like use of a lot, that's the part?
I have a problem with containing three dwelling units, because you don't talk about structures there either. And the issue is it's three, it's two separate structures, so the whole structure point isn't there either. And it's not located on a pre-existing non-conforming use of a lot. It's located on a lot, but the use is not on. It's, it's just, the language is just not right. So that we should say, but the premises is part of a legal non-conforming use consisting of two structures. Of which the premises is a two-family structure having three stories, so. And I think that solves that problem. Okay.
Would you just say that, just a little bit slower, because I'm going to type track changes in.
Sure. The premise is part of a legal non-conforming use consisting of two residential structures. Of which the premises are a two-family residential structure having three stories.
You mean, it's a lot that contains two?
Yes, contains two structures. Yeah.
And a, and a third unit is located in a separate garage structure? Can we add?
Yes, that's there, that's fine. But is there a difference between the, now you have a definition of the premises and the building? And um, you're talking about the same thing, is, what is you, unit B is the third floor? What is unit B?
No, you did be is three stories. It's a half of the building, and the other half also has, I believe, three stories. I don't know, two stories or three stories in the other.
Then, then it, if the premises, and just, just to be, clarify something. If the premises, i.e. the unit as to which the application relates, right, Mr. T Kurt's unit. If the, if Mr. T Kurt's unit, I believe Mr. T Kurt's unit is on two stories, not three stories. Am I wrong?
Yes.
Mr. T Kurt's unit is on three floors?
Yes, you come in on the ground floor. Then you go up and there's some area there, and then you go up some stairs and there is the area that we all know, Mr. T Kurt.
Right, so there are, so there.
And then there's another story that goes up to a third.
Correct, but let me, I'm sorry, Meg, let me just, that's where it's confusing. I thought that the building in which Mr. T Kurt's unit is located has two dwell, separate. Uh, dwelling units. One dwelling unit is the first story. And a separate dwelling unit is the second and third floor.
No, is that two different entrances? And so one is three stacked, three stories, and then around another part of the, part of the building. Sorry. And does anybody hear that? I, something going on outside my residence. Firecrackers.
Oh.
I hope it's firecrackers and not.
I have to hurry up and vote before it got to something, huh?
All right, that's distracted.
So you're saying that both units are three stories?
Yes, they're stacked, and they have completely separate entrances.
Okay. I guess I've never, I, I maybe it's because I didn't pay to focus on the other unit. Okay, so um. So the premises is.
Is his.
Part of a legal non-conforming, oh god, is located on a lot, so is located on a lot. Which has. Um, which, so it's low, so the premises is located on a lot. Which is, which has a legal, non-conforming, three-family use.
Plus the unit, which is also non-conforming to have the two buildings on the same lot, so.
Right, which is.
Attention to that. That's why the lot, it was the use of the lot is pre-existing non-conforming.
But it's not located on a non, oh, not, it's not located on a non-conforming use of a lot. It is a non-conforming.
Is a non-conforming.
Or of a non-conforming use of a lot. That's the problem. It's part of a non-conforming. Lot, use of a lot.
It's really, it's a, it's a property that has non-conforming uses on it comprised of.
Right, right, that's what I was trying to say. Exactly.
So should I read what I have based on the discussion? Um, the property on which the premises is located is within the R five zoning district, which permits one family dwellings. But the premises is located on a lot, which has a legal, non-conforming, three-family use.
Located in two structures.
Use located.
Pre-existing, it's not a legal existing, but I, I think, I don't know if you put pre-existing in.
No, you don't need to. If it's a legal non-conforming use, then the fact that it's a legal non-conforming use means it's pre-existing by definition. You don't need to say legal pre-existing. Once you say legal non-conforming use, that automatically tells you it's pre-existing.
After that, Charlie, we're just, I'm sorry, what was the word?
So a legal, non-conforming, three-family use located in two structures. Consisting of two residential.
I think, I don't think you need to say that it's located consisting of um.
Two structures, one of which is two family and one of which is a one family.
Correct.
Right.
And that the premises are part of the two-family. Struck residential structure which has three stories.
Okay, hang on, there's a lot to follow here. Um, consisting. So I have, is located on a lot, which has a legal, non-conforming, three-family use. Consisting of two structures.
Comprised.
Residential structures, make it clear it's residential.
Two residential structures.
One of which is a two-family.
One of which is a two-family.
And the other by mathematical deduction is a one family.
Family.
Yeah.
Okay, and then.
And she wants to, what premises are located, right? The premises are located in the.
That uh, defined term then as the building. And the third unit is located in a separate garage structure. Okay.
Is it a garage?
It was a garage.
It was a garage, it's no longer.
I mean, I wouldn't call it a garage structure.
Separate structure, a separate structure.
Okay, got it.
Okay, then moving on to the whereas clause on the second page. Which I think it was on the second page, it might have moved, whereas the applicant appealed the NOVs.
Yep.
Um, it should be the applicant appealed five of the NOVs. He did not appeal two of the NOVs. So it's, he only appealed five of the, of those NOVs. And the board made the following decision dated September tenth, twenty twenty, a copy of which is attached here too. We're referring to this, let's attach a copy. Because that's the basis for us deciding anything. Then um, going through those things, so the first one, deny the appeal and listed the appeals that it denied. It also did something else. It determined that the use of the third floor of the premises was an illegal third dwelling unit. It said that. And if we're going to say what this, what the, what it did, then we have to say that it determined that the use of the third floor of the premises was.
Robin, is that a direct quote?
It says it. It says.
That's not my answer to my question. Is that the exact wording that you have in your resolution?
I have to open the resolution and I will look. Um, have to find the resolution. I looked at the resolution when I was reviewing this, but I don't have the, it opened in front of me, so I'll have to find it. I can find it.
I can read it if you'd like. I have the provision in front of me.
Yeah, and also, I don't.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to.
Just simply saying what was the status of each of these appeals, you're trying to add, you're adding some interpretation. Yeah, you are adding.
You're attaching it and you.
I'm not adding an interpretation, I'm giving.
Adding findings, rather, what I'm doing is just stating what was denied, what was upheld, to clarify that. You're adding more information, which I chose not to put there.
Um, well, it seems to me that by choosing not to do it and the rest of the sense of this resolution, you are eliminating. You're leaving out some of the important, and what is relevant to some of the findings that you are not then discussing in here.
Except you're attaching it, Rob. You've asked that it be attached. So I mean, if you don't attach and when we can write it all out, I mean, I think. Say it was, you want to, I've never seen it attached, but you want to attach it? Fine, but I, I, I think it's a lot of, you know, it speaks for itself at this point.
Um, okay, I mean, you know, we'll do what we, you know, if the board doesn't want to do it, I'm just, you know, this is my. Okay, with respect to, to point number two, granted the.
We didn't get past the number one, so I don't agree with that change for number one. So I don't know how anybody else feels, but I think the way that I originally wrote it is fine. And I don't want.
Which is number one.
Determine, this is deny the appeal of those one, two, three, four uh, NOVs.
Yeah, I like that, that's what happened.
Um, the next one is granted the applicant's appeal. You don't have granted an appeal to, it's an appeal of, but that's.
Were there changes to number one?
No, the, no board doesn't like them. I think the board is, but anyway. Um, granted the applicant's appeal of and found that the property on which the premises is located. Now, this, it didn't, it didn't, the board's resolution did not simply say it had not lost its status as a pre-existing legal non-conforming status. The re- resolution said that did not lose its legal non-conforming status. As long as the applicant remedies the illegal alterations to eliminate the separate dwelling.
That's fine, that's fine.
Want to just go, want to just do it consistent with the other one?
Because it's not consistent, because we're making a statement.
I know, but if you want to just end it after five eight, is that okay?
And where we've already.
It was just, it was because of. The reason why, let me just explain, the reason why I did this was because it was confusing. The, the appeals and the numbers got confused in the original resolution. So I was, I was pointing this one out because it actually had gotten flipped in the original.
I got you.
So that's why I had highlighted the.
So Meg, you have no problem with that change then?
I don't have a problem with number two. It helps to clarify what was the error in the.
Right, got you.
We just go on over in a slower manner what that change was.
If I, you, you have, it would be granted the applicant's appeal of the NOV. And found that the property on which the premises is located did not lose its legal, non-conforming status. As a three-family property, quote, as long as the applicant remedies. The illegal alterations to eliminate the separate dwelling unit, close quote.
Okay, so I got the quote, as long as the property, and then I lost it because I couldn't type that fast.
Um, if you, if you look at what I circulated, it's right in there.
Okay, perfect.
If you did, Robin, quick question. If it was altered, does it lose its status? Is it, does it revert? Does it lose its prior non-conforming status?
I'm not sure what, if, if, what is altered, as long as it remedies the illegal alterations, that's what the board's, that's what the resolution says. So if they didn't remedy illegal alterations, whatever those remedies are, which is what the issue is here. Then it is, it loses its three-family status, yes. It has to remedy the illegal alterations.
What's the grounds? What is the, if it runs with the land, how does that happen? I'm just asking.
How does, what, if what runs?
How does it go back to it lose its status? I can understand if.
I can't answer the question, David.
Let me explain. If it does something improper, you can say it's, it's a violation, it's got to be changed. But does it lose its status as a two-family or multi-family if it doesn't, if it has a violation?
I, I'm not answering that question. This is what the board resolution said.
Okay, oh, fair enough, fair enough, fair enough.
I'm just giving you.
That's fine, you're right, you're right, thank you.
Um, you're asking a different, good question, and I'm not, you know, I'm not, I don't want to think about the answer right now, because that's.
I'm good, I'm.
But I'm not going there. Okay, then um, the three is, so then the new, then the three is fine. And I um, added a new language, whereas the board did not specify the changes that the applicant needed to make. To the unit to comply with the village's zoning code, because we didn't, that resolution didn't, and I want to say that. And that's the whole key here. The board didn't make that determination.
Okay.
Is that also in your draft, Robin?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just reading from my draft and explaining where necessary.
I got you.
Okay, great.
Okay, then the state, there is a.
Wait, Meg, could you respond to that? So why don't we just do this in serum, we don't have to go back over this all?
No, actually, that, that was an addition. That's fine with me, that's addition.
Okay.
Okay, then. This, the resolution had in it a definition of dwelling unit. And I don't.
Why do you want to take out the?
And that's, let me finish, Meg, please, and it also talks about accessory use. And I don't think either of those are relevant, because those go to whether or not this is, there is an illegal unit or not. And the board determined it was an illegal unit. So I don't think anything relating to the definition of dwelling unit or other, or accessory uses is relevant to this decision. Because all that's being appealed is, given that the resolution said that this was an illegal, a third. Unit, an illegal unit on the third floor, how does the applicant remedy that? And so everything having to do with what is the definite, well, definition of dwelling unit does not appropriately belong here.
Do you know how to remedy it? If you don't know what it is, you're trying.
We made that decision. We.
No, 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 you made the decision that it is, yes, and that it has to be remedied. And then we're going through this, saying this is what has to change to remedy it, but you have to have the reference to say. What the code, zoning code describes when you're remedying it, otherwise. What the code, zoning code describes when you're remedying it, otherwise, that doesn't make any sense to me at all. This whole resolution and what the, what was being appealed, what the building inspector had. Um, requested was, I thought purportedly to make sure brought into compliance in terms of no longer being a separate dwelling unit. You would need to have the definition. And also because I've added the accessory about rumors and borders, because. The only inspector went into where someone is supposed to live, otherwise I don't know that.
I I I don't know that, so I don't have, I have less of a problem with the definition of dwelling unit, but I have an absolute problem with. The permitted accessory use, because that doesn't go to what they have to remedy, this is what a dwelling unit is. And to the extent you're saying that you can have two rumors or borders, which the resolution specifically found this was not. So we can't say, if you're saying that we, the board found in its resolution. That these were not rumors or borders, that's what the resolution said, so if we're never saying. That's irrelevant, because the board found you couldn't have, that this was not rumors.
We have to go to other board members. I believe that the, it said that they didn't find they were akin to something. To me, that if it was not a rumor border, they did not, the resolution did not say. This person does not, is not meeting the standard of a rumor or a border, and it does not say that.
There was a lot of discussion.
Sorry, I'll just finish, I'll just finish first.
Yes, sorry.
You, I think we all understand your point of view, I think we go to the other board members and see. How they want to feel, whether they feel that it's inappropriate to put this piece of the code in there, referring to rumors and borders.
I think it's very appropriate, because it goes to the remedy, it goes to if they're going to make it non-board. You can't without saying, okay, it's gotta be illegal, you gotta get rid of the, as Robin said at the beginning. As long as you get rid of the illegal use, etc., well, here you're saying what the uses are, I don't understand, it's just a quote from the code. Just like Robin, you wanted a attachment, I don't know, I mean, I think lay it up, it's there, it it is what it is. We're not talking about relevance, that's what the code says. How can you discuss dwelling in it, it's misleading to suggest it's a single family dwelling period, you know? And it allows borders and rooms, why? I have no idea, but that's what the code does. I wouldn't know that but for the dwelling unit, but but for saying, I don't see how, it's not swaying anything, it's not determining it, so that's my gift, anyway.
Why would you cut out, just as we corrected what was wrong about the reference numbers? There's nothing wrong to to explain, that was very misconstrued in the, the. A quote started with dwelling unit, never ended a quote and went into another piece of the code afterwards. I do think it's relevant to explain that. Because it was misleading in that other resolution, just as the errors and the violation numbers got mixed up. There was something left out when you tried to, um, you know, you just didn't close a quote or something about dwelling unit. We should clarify that.
I I don't think it's relevant to this, I think you've now included the definition, the fact that the board decision only cited only a portion. Is not relevant to the fact, we've got the whole quote here, whether it did or didn't. Um, the board, the the resolution also discussed a lot about what were rumors or borders, a lot of discussion. So I don't know that this, this, there's a reason for the footnote, it's not a big deal, it seems to me just irrelevant and not necessary, but.
I would like to keep the the footnote.
Now, we talk, you talk, um, later on, it's.
Yeah, I don't, so now you want to add information about the.
We don't have to, I thought in here I read, and now I'm reading it again, and it's not there, I thought you talked in here and and it's not here, so. I, we can take that out, I thought in here you discussed the appeal to the. The appeal to the court, if you don't discuss the appeal to the court, yes, you do. You do discuss the appeal to the court, and so if you're discussing the appeal to the court. Then I don't see why we don't also discuss the appeal to the Department of State. Why are we discussing?
On the building code violations, it's not about zoning.
No, actually, the application was an appeal of the zoning code, that's how the.
It possibly be, you don't go where the applicant went with that was on the building. Obviously, no, I, I'm sorry, I really think you're, you're really off the mark here, Robin. That appeal was about the building code, and as I understand it. That the response was you have zoning violations, you need to clear those up, and then we can talk to you about the building code. But it was, no, he was not, the applicant was not asking for an interpretation of zoning, so this is completely. It's not necessary, I don't know why this is here.
Okay, now to correct what you just said, the actual resolution did not appeal the, it sort of appealed both. And what the appeal, what the, what the Department of State said was that it had no authority. To decide appeals relating to the villages zoning laws, and what the application said is, these codes say. That um it is something about the building code, and therefore the zoning resolution has to, they have to allow us. To be there under the zoning code, so it was an appeal of both and or. So it wasn't just an appeal of the building code, it was an appeal of the building code, and therefore it is a legal use and it can stay there. And the Department of State said.
You know, let's keep going, I disagree, I want.
I'm gonna disagree with most of my comments, but that's besides the point.
I would.
Excuse me, was the building code, were the papers on the building code violation in the record here?
They were distributed, I thought, to all the board members at some point.
I have no idea, I've never seen them.
When was the no electrical permit and no um work done without electric permit and work done without plumbing permit, I think.
No, it was much more than that, it was, um, it had to do with definition of of um what, it had to do with a lot of the definitions.
I thought that the two, the two that you said that we did not review were those ones with the.
No, it's not what it was, it was more, it was much broader than just.
But anyway, um, I.
I don't know, I don't have it now in front of me.
Okay, so I don't accept this, if I would hear from Greta and David, if you feel that it's important that. Discuss appealing to the New York State about building code violations, if you think that should be in here, but I don't.
But as I said, it wasn't an appeal of the.
I, we heard you, Robin, but then we're hearing from me, and I don't agree, and I would like to take it out. Greta, David?
Well, I mean, do we, 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 do we? Robin's kind of contradicted herself at one point, she said it wasn't included in the rest of the resolution, and then she said it was, so. Where's the reference in the resolution to why you would have it in the first place?
I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't say anything about wasn't included in the resolution.
No, earlier you made a comment.
I said I couldn't find, I didn't remember where the appeal, I knew that this had mentioned the appeal to the court, and if we were talking about the appeal to the court. And I couldn't find it, and then I, because I thought it was after, but it was before this, and then I said, oh no, it's there, the appeal to the court. And because the, following that appeal to the court, I wanted to put in the other appeal, that was why.
Yeah, but I don't think that's got, I I haven't seen those papers, so I'm not gonna, I don't, I don't find the relevance.
So I don't know. I thought it was distributed to all the board members.
I never saw it, I've never seen it, I don't know the paperwork on it, I don't know what, what was the issues, what the jurisdictions were. All I know is this doesn't seem relevant to anything we did.
That's fine, you'll do what, you'll do what you want, um, okay, um. Moving on to the determination.
Yep.
So the first. With your supply architectural drawing showing the partial second floor stair and landing. And there's a language in there that says this finding is not relevant to the twenty twenty board decision. I'm not sure what that means, and I think it is relevant, but I just don't think that, I think that's a building code determination that. It it shouldn't be, shouldn't be, I I don't think that sentence is necessary, I think that sentence should come out.
I think we're both saying the same thing, that it's, it's talking about what's required in terms of the building code, and which is. Nothing that we are, we are reviewing, and it was nothing that had to do with the twenty twenty resolution.
But but I don't know that it's relevant, I don't want to say it's not relevant, I'm not sure that it's not relevant, all these things are relevant to what was decided. It's just that it's not something that the board should be deciding, because it's a building code question.
Well, you can say it's not within the purview of this, of this board.
That's fine, I'm fine with saying it's not within the purview of this board, but I don't want to say it's not relevant. Because I don't.
It's not within the findings.
Where are you getting, I'm, I'm, I must be tracking the wrong one.
Okay, we're on page four, down the, towards the bottom of.
It's got the list of the October, after the now therefore be resolved.
Are you looking, are you looking at Robin's markup that she sent us?
I'm looking at red, which has my markup on it, but I'm sorry, I'm looking at Meg's, if you just look at.
She, yeah, she sent something um like at seven o'clock today, tonight.
At five, at six o'clock, I think, yeah, something like that, yeah, I, I just gave it because I thought that, just so you'd have it, but.
No, it's handy, you have it.
Um, so that's why circulate, otherwise, I, I could have just circulated it like, you know, sometimes at this, this, but I thought you'd have it ahead.
I think it'll find it a lot easier to follow the discussion, if you look at.
Yeah, but if you don't have that, David. If you just go to, and you have, and you have Meg's in front of you, then if you go to on page four, it says. The October determination, the first one is building inspector determination, and.
I'm there, I got that, okay.
And so instead of the finding is not relevant, I think it's to say that the, this is not within the purview of the ZBA, I think that would be appropriate.
Should we um state why it's not within the purview, so something I just uh thought of was. The determination as to the requirements for a building permit for walls and doors is not before the board. Because it is not within the jurisdiction of this board as it relates to the New York State Building Code.
I think that's fine.
Well. To the extent that it relates to the building.
Well, it only, what they have to submit is part of the building code requirement. It is or isn't, it relates to that, but what if they are, is not, we're not, we don't know. Okay, moving on to building inspector determination, so number two relating to the two twenty floor outlets, so. The.
Stand, I truly don't understand the sentence that you.
I'm going to explain, I'm happy to explain it, that um as the resolution said. The board finds that consistent with the existing two twenty volt outlet. Could be used to sort of a non-portable stove, provide. We based, what the resolution said is that you could do a lot of things, and the whole issue came up, as long as it's not used as a separate dwelling unit. So all of this is okay, provided that the third floor is not a separate dwelling unit, if it is a separate dwelling unit, you can't do this. That's what the.
We're trying to find the changes or alterations or different uses. To make it not a separate dwelling unit, to just say, and don't use it as a separate dwelling unit, is not helping the cause. We are talking here, the building inspector said you have to remove the electric line. What I suggest is that I agree that there was some concern, because it was raised. That it can be used for a stove and or oven, and so that it can, it has to be clear. That it cannot be used for that, but it it either you, you can't use it, or you, you can, it's not provided. The third floor is not otherwise used as a separate dwelling unit, it. It's what makes it a separate dwelling unit, it's not like, if it's not there and somebody uses it, uses it. It just doesn't, it's just superfluous, it it doesn't provide any, any substance to say, provided the third floor is not otherwise used as a separate dwelling unit.
Yeah.
Well, but I don't disagree.
I just don't understand the logic of putting that in there.
Okay, the fact that you have a two twenty volt electric line tells you nothing about whether it's a separate dwelling unit or not.
Right.
Right, it tells you nothing about whether it's a separate dwelling, so, so wait.
Well, excuse me, but that's what the building inspector found.
Why didn't he tell them to rip out the?
Yeah, why did he come to rip it out?
Because at the, the board had all this discussion about the fact.
Alright.
And was there, about whether or not there was a stove, and whether or not you could put a stove in. And one of the issues that some of the board members raised was, as long as it was, well, since there's no stove, it clearly can't be complete cooking facilities. And so the question was, if there, what if there is a two twenty volt line, but no stove, is that okay? Or even if you could just stick the stove in it while nobody's watching, um, and that was the issue, so that was the whole issue that came up. Because if there's a two hundred and twenty volt line, that's not connected to anything, that's fine. But if the two hundred and twenty volt line is connected to something, maybe it is a problem, and. Um, the issue was whether or not it's a separate dwelling unit, so just to say it's okay to have a two hundred and twenty volt line. Also is is eliminating the concern that exists.
But there's always a concern, that's like saying you can have a knife, as long as you don't kill somebody with it. I don't get it, okay, I really don't. In my home, I had two kitchens in my home, I'm allowed to, if I can have a little bar kitchen and another one. Does that limit, mean I can't have a border because I have two kitchens, once more, I don't even think so, I think this is, but you don't want my, anyway. I don't understand, because you're saying the board wants a two twenty wall.
The issue was discussed a lot, it was a big issue relating.
Adeline, the, 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 the hearing is closed, we can't speak to anybody.
Okay. Was somebody trying to speak? The um building inspector is trying to speak.
Buildings, the building department was an adversarial.
This one I wouldn't take, the building department, I think that's right. Given that the appeal is of something.
I was clear in what I was writing, if you want to change some words. Clear that a two twenty volt by itself is fine, there's nothing in the zoning code that says you can't have a two twenty volt.
There's nothing in the zoning code.
Excuse me, there's nothing in the zoning code that says you can't have twenty volt, maybe you have an extra great air conditioner, or. I don't know what hobby you have, and you need a two twenty volt line, it's nobody else's business. If you're gonna install permanent cooking, a stove and an oven attached to it, that's the part, that's the problem. We don't have jurisdiction to tell somebody, because we think you might be a bad actor. You can't have electricity like everybody else does in the village, we are gonna.
Meg, my dryer is a two twenty volt, so I couldn't have my dryer, right?
I'm sorry, this, I'm not saying that it is, I don't know why you're all interpreting that, all I said is. Well, it's not a separate dwelling unit, otherwise I have no problem with it.
No, 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 but you're saying, you're, you're, you're conditioning it upon.
I'm not conditioning it upon it, I'm saying.
Finding on the applicant non-stalling. Come on, I'm not, alright, I'm getting lost.
Um, now, the board finds a two hundred, which should be uh two, two twenty, but the board finds that the two hundred volt line is in itself is zoning compliant. The zoning resolution says nothing about two twenty volt lines or any lines, and so that sentence is just wrong. A, the zoning code does not discuss electric lines, that sentence is wrong, and we shouldn't say it.
Which is.
It is not zoning compliant.
So the board finds no evidence that the two twenty volt line is zoning non-compliant, then I will change it.
But the board finds.
Find any evidence that a two twenty volt.
No, the two twenty volt line has nothing to do with zoning, therefore it has nothing to do with zoning code.
Well, there is, excuse me, the zoning code does not prohibit a two twenty line, is that correct?
You can say that.
Say that.
Because he's telling him. He's telling him to rip out the electric.
If you want to say what Dave says, that's fine.
Not prohibit.
Cannot find any thing in the zoning code, you can say that in better words than.
But say it directly.
Way Dave said it is the best way to say it.
I mean, it doesn't, the, the code does not prohibit a two twenty volt line.
Best way to say it.
That's fine, that's fine, so I would like to take out, provided that the third floor does not otherwise use as a separate dwelling unit, that is not the point of what I. We are finding here, and 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 that we say that, as as Dave said, better than what I said, that. That the, say it again, Dave, say it again, Dave.
I'm gonna defer to, no, I just. Code prohibits a two twenty volt line.
That's fine.
And I would like to confess I have one, you can put that in there. I have locks on some of my doors, and I intend to keep them.
Going on to number three, uh in the middle of number three, it says the board finds that a food consumption area is zoning compliant. Absent permanently installed non-portable cooking facilities, that is completely inconsistent with what the resolution said. There was no permanently installed non-portable cooking facilities as currently operated on the third floor. Nevertheless, the board find, found that it was a separate dwelling unit. Therefore, to put this sentence in would be overturning the decision of the board, and we do not have that authority. So that sentence should. So that sentence should absolutely come out, it is completely inconsistent with the resol.
Go ahead, Meg.
No, no, you, you go ahead, I've been talking a lot, brother.
No, I was just gonna say, that resolution was based on the totality of the circumstances. There wasn't one factor that determined what made an illegal dwelling unit. So it is permissible to ma- to make this interpretation because the, that resolution was vague. Purposely vague on what co- what constituted. And material factors, so this, this, I don't find this at all inconsistent.
Why is that implicit in the two twenty?
We know that at the time, there were no permanent cooking facilities, uh note whatever the sentence is here, we know that those did not exist. At the time, nevertheless, it is, even though the board knew that that wasn't there. It found it to be a third dwelling unit, there was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of discussion about the fact that. Whether or not a stove was needed, the two board members who, uh Megan and Greta, you both discussed and tried and said. At the hearing that um at the, at the prior resolution of the fact that there was no stove, a stove was necessary. In order to make it a separate dwelling unit, and the other board members did not agree that a.
I disagree with you, I was there for the deliberations and it was never that explicit, you guys never actually talked exactly what was required. You didn't, we could go back to the recordings, but that was never your, your, you're saying that now, but that was not.
I disagree with you completely.
Okay, but I disagree, so let's not, we'll, we'll stand.
What about, would you, would you, is it, does it, do you adjust this to say the board finds it implicit in the two thousand?
We're not arguing about the fact that it identified that this area was a food consumption area, it also found a lot of things, it, it. That somebody took pictures and they found this, found, you know, whereas, 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 and whereas a food consumption area was constructed. It did not say, whereas a food consumption area was constructed, that constitutes a third dwelling. It did not say that, it, it had a lot of whereas's of what it had discovered, and at the end it made a, a. Determination that it was a third dwelling unit, but we're telling people that you can't have a bar like Dave says. You can't have a little refrigerator and a sink and a counter, and you know, with a coffee maker on top of it. A food consumption area, as most people, people I talk to, everybody said like, I have a lot of food consumption areas in my house. Food consumption areas are not something that is prohibited by the code.
Um, think, what the resolution said was that he clearly maintains his own household on the upper floor. In space that provides complete housekeeping and sanitary facilities. Now, I will say that the, and there was no stove on the premises. So, given that the board found that what he had right then, right there, what he had at the time. Was complete housekeeping and set facilities, even though there was no stove. To say now that the fact that he had no stove means that it couldn't be a separate dwelling unit. Is overturning that decision, it's just wrong. You are, the board by adopting resolution that says this is essentially doing uh, is overturning that decision. You are taking a specific provision, i.e. the board found there were complete housekeeping facilities. On the third floor, there was no permanently installed, non-portable cooking facilities, therefore. Just now say that the fact that he doesn't have a permanently installed. You are saying that. Uh, you're, you're all, it's all, I'm gonna continue.
Okay, but Robin. In your affidavit that you supplied for the appeal of the resolution. You put in that it had portable cooking and that that was sufficient. So was that in the minds of people, when your, when the majority opinion said there was complete housekeeping facilities? It did not delineate, it was no stove or oven or what it was that created the complete housekeeping facilities.
Correct, but you are saying now, here's the problem, if, if you are saying now. That the fact that you don't have permanently installed, non-portable cooking facilities. Means that it is not a separate dwelling unit, and I'm tell, and I'm saying that. That is the condition that exists now, so you are saying he doesn't have to do anything to his unit. And you know what, you and I, you and I agree, because what it looks like to me, and I'm going to say this, is that the board members who lost. Two votes now seem to have a majority, and they are, you are essentially overturning the decision. Of the uh ZBA in twenty, uh the twenty twenty decision, you are essentially overturning. Everything that was found and everything that was decided, so I will continue to go through my comments. I understand that none of you are going to accept them, but I will make my point, and then you can make the resolution as you want without these changes. And I will vote no, so let me finish rather than going through these in details.
Very brief, Robin, I think that's, I think you should go through them all, and I just want to say for the record that I think. Your assertion that we're, we're fully overturning it is erroneous, and it's certainly your position. I just don't think you, you, it's right to say, that's what we've all agreed upon, but that's fine.
Okay, uh, okay, Dave, that's fine, that's how, that's what this perce- is, I, how I perceive it, and if you don't.
Oh, I'm sorry, perceptions, and I don't, I don't, those two, one, and I, and I didn't even vote on this, did I in the past? I wasn't on the board, right?
No, you are, okay.
So it's not, I'm, I'm sorry, okay, go ahead.
Uh, the board finds that the twenty twenty decision did not determine that wall and base kitchen cabinetry contributed to the creation of an illegal dwelling. And no revision to these foundations are required, this is again inconsistent with the same statement, essentially what we're saying is, he can keep. The housekeeping facilities the way he kept them, and he doesn't have to make any changes and it's not a separate dwelling unit. Well, uh, that's completely, in my mind, that's overturning it, the same thing, um. It, the next one has to do with um uh exposing penetrations. The applicant did not appeal the twenty nineteen violation that related to illegal work, so if the building inspector. Believes that removal of the sheet rock is necessary to evaluate the illegal work, I don't understand why we're telling him otherwise. If the building inspector thinks he needs to look at something, we did not make that decision, that was not part of our decision, he didn't appeal it. I don't know why we would be saying.
We're talking.
What he does or doesn't have to do.
We're talk, we're not talking about illegal work in terms of billing code, we're talking about, is that necessary? To make this remedy the separate dwelling unit, so you're not talking about whether or not he needs to open a wall in terms of. Looking at electrical work, that's not at all what we're talking about, if, if, we're, we're talking about is that. And I think we make a disclaimer that this has nothing to do with what is required for building code um compliance. We're talking as, in terms of coming into zoning compliance, there is no reason to be caucking these things or opening them up. It has nothing to do with zoning.
Um, okay, going to the next one.
Should there be a change to number five then, to that effect?
No, no, no.
Um, the next one says, although the twenty twenty board decision includes an assertion by the village code of enforcement officer. That a wall and door had been installed, uh, the board clarifies and notes their site plan has never been provided to the board. And that the walls, et cetera, et cetera, um, this is again, I don't believe that was provide. Uh, whether or not it was provided, I don't, and it certainly wasn't provided in connection with these applications. Um, now, uh, this is all, this is all again, relitigating the prior decision, uh then it says that. Uh, the board finds the stairway wells to be a pre-existing condition at the time of the applicant's purchase. The fact that something is a, is an existing condition at the time, the applicant bought the property, doesn't make it a legal, non-conforming use. Just because I bought a piece of property which has an illegal condition on it, doesn't legalize it, if it's illegal when it was installed. Notwithstanding, I bought it with that condition, it continues to be illegal, so to say that it was just because it was there when he bought it. Makes it legal is wrong as a matter of law.
I don't believe I'm saying that, that because, I'm pointing out that it was there because there was a, a, a sense. That he had recently constructed this, I do not say because it's pre-existing, it's legal, I don't say that. Making the.
Well, then I'm not sure why it's relevant, because the board finds that the stairway wells to be a pre-existing condition, what is that relevant to?
Relevant to all of the pressure that, how come you did work without a permit? If it was a, a previous owner that did the work, that's very often remedied and you're allowed to have somebody come in and, and you get it rectified. But it's because there was quite a lot of information about how much work was done without permits.
Well, if you, if the prior owner had done illegal work, that still has to be remedied. We don't have it, um, let me continue, um, then it says that the board finds that the twenty twenty decision does not support. Building inspector's determination that the walls need to be removed, um. I just, the twenty twenty decision discussed the locked doors between the two unit and it was part of the decision. Going on to the next one, again, I, rather than taking up more time, I will just finish, um, you will disagree with me. Rather than go through each of these in more detail, let me just make my comments and then we can vote. Um, with respect to the eight, number eight, the building inspector termination, um. Share your kitchen and bath facilities and reside as a common household residence, um. This says, the zoning code permits the applicant to share the premises with up to two rumors, the zoning code neither. Support specifies no prohibits the assignment of specific living, says, the twenty twenty decision specifically determined that the use by the current tenant was not. As a rumor or board, so what this resolution is essentially saying that is that. Nothing has to, Mr. Teager does not, notwithstanding that the board. Um, notwithstanding that the board found that this was an illegal situation. The applicant does not have to do anything to remedy that illegal situation because. Each of these things doesn't make a difference and therefore he can keep them all. You are, I think there's no question that this is overturning the prior decision, not a little bit of a question. The fact that it's a pre-existing condition is irrelevant, we've talked about the um locked doors. We said it was an illegal, we said it wasn't a, a border rumor or a border, you can't now say, oh, it is a rumor or a border. We said it wasn't a rumor or a border.
Did not say exactly that, you did not exactly say that, you said it was not akin to something. Why would you use a, a, a modifier like it's not akin to something, if it's not something, you say it's not something. It's not akin to something, what does that mean? And it, you know, why would you put in akin if it's, they are not a rumor or a border, say they're not a rumor or a border.
Because they're not defined, so since they're not defined, it was impossible for the co- for us to say they weren't. How do we know what a rumor or a border is, so we looked at other definitions and we could say it was an akin. Because we don't have a definition.
Right, and because of that, he should have known that, he should have been aware of that, and they should rip his walls out. I'm sorry, this is way out of my league.
Uh, exactly, and, and I, I, I think that as I said, I think this is all overturning what the board decision, whether or not.
You know, Robin, it's not, it's in good faith, this is not overturning the decision. We looked at it, the decision was vague, the decision at the very end didn't point to any particular critical issue. Talked about totality of the circumstances, and really left it to the building department to make the determination. They made a determination and they overreached, and it was unacceptable. So now we're going back and giving some specific guidance in line with the original determination. And, you know. We, this is, these, th- this determination doesn't just apply to one thirty Beach Avenue. It applies to every single rumor or border situation, to all these Airbnbs which. You know, may not even be legal anyway under the code, and everything else, and it gives very specific guidance. So people can comply with the law, simple as that.
What we're basically saying is, you don't have to do anything to do it, just continue to do what you're doing, everything you've done is okay. We're not making, and we're not giving any guidance to the board or to any future operator as to what they have to do. Or what you can do, we're saying that you don't have to do anything, there is no guidance in here that was provided.
Robin, you're right, you're, but you're giving, I don't agree with, but your guidance is. You got tags, rip out the walls and do all of that.
I haven't said what I think is appropriate, I'm saying that what this says is wrong, I don't know what I think is the right answer, I didn't even.
I know, but I, that's part of our responsibility, I think, with all respect.
But I think that since.
And I think it really is part of, and I think it's very clear, why don't we move ahead, let's continue, please.
I would like to make a, an edit to my own, my own finding, and number seven. Um, I would like to, instead of simply saying locks are only permitted, that's a. I would like to, to differentiate it to say hallway locks, hallway door locks. Because there could be locks on safes or jewelry boxes or different things, so hallway locks are only permitted as would normally be permitted with any dwelling. And a halli- hallway lock, hallway door lock, which is not key the same as other hallway door locks. Just, that's what I would, I would like to change it to hallway door locks.
Um, uh, going back, just finishing up on the rumor or border, the board. Specific, uh, what it says, it does not have separate housekeeping and this talks only, it's interesting that this only talks. About bath facilities, doesn't talk about kitchen in here, whether a rumor or border can have a completely separate kitchen. Of their own, I don't know it, but just, you know, it's only talks about bath facilities, so um it's kind of leaving that out. This one talks about, the determination relates to kitchen and bath facilities, and yet the findings set only relate to. Bath facilities, so.
Because that's what, that's what, the, there was, it's responding to what the building inspector said.
Yes, he says kitchen and bath facilities, and yet.
Okay, we could say he, he can share his, the kitchen facilities as well, but if he wants to eat all of his meals outside the space, he could do that too. He doesn't have to eat in the kitchen, if he goes to work and they give him lunch, or he, you know, he just.
But he doesn't.
But that's fine, I don't care if you.
Does not have separate housekeeping facilities.
Right, we.
But you don't agree, you don't even say that, you don't say anything, all you say is you imply that, um. But since you don't say it, you're denying it even though all you're talking about is bath facilities. Uh, anyway, I think we should just vote on this rather than, because there's no point, you all disagree with me, I disagree with you, I think you should just vote. And let's move on. I do not think this resolution seeks to clarify the appropriate remedy since it uh currently has a non-portable stove. And or oven, nevertheless, it was found to be a separate dwelling unit, um, and therefore, I, I, I don't think this is right since.
Robin, do you think that the building inspector, any part of it should be reversed or overturned?
I, I, you know what, I, I, this is, I was, I thought this was so overwhelmingly denying. And negating what the um resolution was, do I think anything, let's see, if I went through this. And went through to answer your question, um, I would say, I, the two hundred and twenty boat, vote line. No, I don't think you have to remove the two hundred and twenty vote line.
But the rest of it stays, right?
I don't know, I have to go through each of them now, I didn't do that.
What we're supposed to be doing, isn't that what this is all about?
But, but given that you have this draft resolution, given that all of you agree with what was fi- found here, I didn't think it was necessary for me. To have to go through each of these things because we are voting on one resolution, I don't agree with this overall, so I'm gonna vote against it. And therefore, I didn't think it was necessary to go through, if you're asking me now to go through these.
I'm not asking you to do anything other than you've agreed to do as a member, that's all fine.
Um, yeah, I, I think that some of these may be overreaching, I do not agree that all of them are as basically you see, this seems to be saying. And I think that the way that a lot of this is worded, is written in a way to completely overturn and negate the.
You keep saying that, but we had an appeal before us, okay, and the question I posed to you is, if you can't tell me, I mean, you're saying aside from the two hundred and twenty volt.
But I just said, there's no point because of.
Well, that, that's not an answer, then, then we would never have it, but we could all just say, hi, I, I don't.
Want me to go, so I said, I'll go.
No, it's eleven at night, I think it's, it's very clear, that's.
Right, that's what I wanted, that's what I said.
Since this, okay, I'm good.
I mean, there were other things that I might um agree with, were overruled or overreaching, or that could have been modified in a way to make it, rather than just. Grant the appeal, there are more things that could have been modified in a way, but. But, um, but that's, but that's not what we've done here.
You, you want a motion? Is that the idea?
I think somebody should make a motion to approve this.
Yeah, um, I just, um, we know Charlie's doing his very best to transcribe what we are delivering to him. So, um, I think we all know what it is that we're voting on. I just want to, we, that we have an opportunity, um, that we vote on what we thought we told Charlie we wanted. And it, correct, Charlie? But what if, if one sentence was still there and we had said, no, we didn't want that sentence?
Do you want Charlie to revise it before we vote and then we just?
No, I wanna, I wanna vote. I wanna get passes. But if we say, if we could correct something, um, I don't know. If there's some, some.
Well, no, I don't think. We always do that, Meg. Meg, we always, after, if, we often vote with a draft resolution to which we've edited and, uh, changes are made and then we just review it and make sure that it is consistent with what we said. I don't think there's any reason this should be any different.
Okay.
And I will provide a, a red line and a clean document so you can see the exact changes, Meg, that were made from your original document.
But we don't vote again then, correct? That's just.
Correct. We just, it's just like, it would be just like any other resolution. We vote on it like we already did tonight with respect to the, um, the one we just.
No, no problem, no problem.
Four nineteen M. Marineric, we voted. There were changes. We'll just review it and make sure those changes are consistent.
Gotcha.
So I move to adopt met, the resolution that Meg drafted as amended in the discussion we had tonight.
I'll second.
Okay, so, um, Meg.
Yes.
Greta.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
And I vote no. Okay, we are done.
Honestly, I think that's it.
No, no, we have one more application tonight.
I know, but it's eleven twenty-five.
I, I think we can, let's see if we can, uh, finish this, that last one up. If we can't, we won't. Um, it is, uh, five oh four the port, Parkway and maybe we can't, um, do five oh four the Parkway tonight. Uh, whatever the board want, if you want to wait.
Are we, we're meeting in two?
Yeah, meeting in two weeks. Okay, so we'll leave five oh four the Parkway for the next meeting? Yes, everybody?
I'm recused anyway.
Oh, right, you're recused. I, I always forget. But you're right. So, um, Meg. Yeah. Uh, so Meg, you wanna leave it for the, you're okay with leaving for the next meeting? That's fine.
Yes.
Okay, so we will leave it for the next meeting. And we are, of course, adjourning with four sixteen Waverly Avenue, so.
Oh, I have a question on that. Just one quick question, please. That's on the Waverly, that, the.
The FEIS.
Yeah, I have a, a concern on that. I'd like to just pose, maybe council can deal with it. We can take it up at the next meeting. But, um, there's been a recent storm in, in this community. And it was clearly from my own visual appearance, it was very, it impacted this. And I'd like to know the impact of that and I'd like it analyzed as part of any environmental impact study. Certainly, it's probably, we dealt with what if, what if, what if? Well, guess what? That's what happened last week. And I think you gotta consider that. And I think the FEIS should be included in that. How long do we have to accept and reject?
My question, so I think the question for Charlie is, let's, let's, because it's a good question, David. The question for Charlie is, given where they are in the process. Can we at this?
Right.
Can we at this point, um, uh, require, request and, and slash require them to, excuse me, uh, add.
Take a second.
Additional, uh, do additional work with respect to the flooding issue. And that's the question.
Well, I think it's our FEIS, if I'm right. And therefore, we decide we want to address that. I certainly do. I'll bring that up at the next meeting. I think, I think it's ridiculous not to.
I get the point in the process to make sure we have it. I will say one thing that I've, I've, I've spoken to Ashley about this. So, um, apparently that's customary for them to, um, with the FEIS to come back and just explain it. And, and that would be the appropriate time to make them, to ask them, I think, um, about this. But so they would come at a work session or we would discuss it at a regular board meeting, but it wouldn't be a public hearing. It would just be like a presentation too. So it wouldn't be quite, it's not a public hearing in that we wouldn't take public comment, but they would be presenting the changes. So, uh, we, we would be doing, you'd have to set up the meeting to do it that way. But the question Charlie that Dave had asked is, can we at this point still ask them to make, uh, to do additional studies based on the current flooding? And, um, if so, is it appropriate to do? Now, do we wait to it when they come to us for the FE, with the FEIS? You know, the kind of discussion of what it is or when should and how should we do that?
Sure. So there is a, there's a legal answer and there's a practical answer. I'll start with the practical answer. I think it would be appropriate to allow me to reach out to the applicant's counsel to ask if they be prepared to address that answer. And I would imagine they would for the record. You have two jurisdictional items before you where you can assess impacts. The area variance request and the secret review. If you review the FEIS, which is the final environmental impact statement that they submit, and you wanna see something else in that environmental impact, final environmental impact statement, now is the time to ask for it.
Okay. Well, it's our FEIS, isn't it? May I suggest that? I would like to read it first and it just came out yesterday, I guess.
I, I, I haven't seen it yet. I do, I did, on a separate matter, I spoke with the, that applicant's law firm. Um, and they did say that they had made a submission in the last few days, but I have not.
Yeah. And that's what Ashley.
The next meeting.
And that's what Ashley was talking about with me, which is the issue of they wanna present the FEIS. So I guess the appropriate thing to do is for, um, I guess if now's the time, so should we wait until they present it? Should we just ask them now? It's not on the agenda, so I'm not quite sure if we can, uh, ask them now or what we have to do procedurally as a way to do it.
Why don't we have, if we could have a meeting with Charlie at the next meeting, if we could meet? Cause that might help. I, I think we should review what our responsibilities are. Cause as I understand that it's our document.
So, yeah. Yeah, what you can do is, it is absolutely your document, but you can ask them to make draft revisions. Do it, and then you can review that before accepting it as your document.
I know, right? All, I understand that. All I'm saying to you is a very different thing. We didn't notice it to be discussed tonight. Um, so, um, the question I'm asking is procedurally, should we, can we do it tonight? Or should we notice it as something to be discussed for the next meeting? And therefore ask them at that point? I'm just asking a very procedural question of what we should be doing.
Nope, it was on the agenda for this evening, so it's appropriate to discuss.
Well, it was on the agenda to, to discuss. Um, we adjourned the application. That's the application for the variance. It was not anything else about it. So I don't know that we can discuss it. It was only to adjourn it. So that's.
The only thing that you can still, you can still discuss it. You're in an open meeting.
Right.
Okay. So fine. Okay, that's fine. I just was checking. So David, you wanna formally make your request?
Yeah, I would, no, I, I would really rather look at the, at the proposal cause there may be other things. And I think then we can talk about it and then we can make the request for them to come in if that's what they do.
Um, so as I said, yes, so, so, so Ashley, it was explaining to me that what would normally happen is, um, we would get a copy of the final EIS. The applicant would sort of present the final EIS so that we understand what they've changed. We understand what they've done. Uh, given that, maybe that's the time to ask them to make these other changes.
Yes, but I'd like to be able to read it because there may be changes that based upon our review of it.
Correct, I understand.
Before they, before they make a presentation, wouldn't it be helpful and logical for us to at least peruse it? And then when they come in, we can discuss.
Fine, I, I, I was thinking.
I don't know, I'm asking. What's the time limitation?
Present it, then we'd review it based on their presentation. And then if we wanted changes, we'd make the changes. But we could do it either way. I, I, you know, I just want.
I would, I mean, I could. So you can ask now, you can ask at the meeting. I would only suggest that you allow me to reach out to the applicant to let them know that this question was asked. Because if additional work is needed to address that question, they can get started on it now.
You know, I'd like to understand, I have not reviewed the FEIS in any way, shape or form. I don't have a copy of. One thing, I, one thing I would look for in it would be an assessment of the storm impact, of what occurred, the nature of what occurred to the building that exists. As I understand it, the first roof, there's tremendous damage there and the other lot too. I'd like to understand it and I'd like it to be considered because that is a result that has to be dealt with.
Yeah, I, I understand the request.
But I don't think, I guess my can, listen, do what you want. And I'm not, I don't know, but I, I, my own personal preferences, I'd rather, before somebody presents something, I'd rather be there, I'd rather have looked at something and then say, okay, here's my questions about it, and, and as opposed to you're telling me what it says, which is very different.
Okay, so, um, I will discuss with Ashley, uh, distribute, assuming it was, uh, distributing the final EIS to the board members.
Yeah, she said that we could pick it up. I said, by the way, Charlie, if you could maybe send us the dates on this thing? How long everyone has to accept the FEIS or not? Are there time constraints and what have you?
There are time constraints. And I'll send that around. I have a flow chart to send around.